Good evening. At 6:30, December 4th, 2017, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Can we have the roll, please?
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
John Spring.
Here.
Mitzi Barker.
Here.
Craig Strike.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Danielle Bailey has been effused. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes, November 6th and November 13th. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Spring. Any objection or additions, changes to make to the minutes? Any objection?
Yeah, I have a small change, I think. There's an error on November 6th, 2017, page 3. I think it was moved to postpone case to December 11th, 2017, and they had November 13th, 2017?
I buy that, since we know our meeting on the 13th.
Right, yeah.
Okay, is that the only one?
That's the only one.
Okay. With that addition, any other, are there any objections to adopting the minutes of November 6th and November 13th? Hearing none, those minutes are adopted. Special order of business first up is disclosures. Mr. Looney.
None.
Craig?
No disclosures.
John Spring. Andre?
I'd like to disclose that on the consent agenda, Resolution 2017-031, I was not present and therefore will not be voting. I'd also like to disclose that on case number 2017-0095, regarding accessory dwelling units and amendments to Title 21, I was part of a working group. I attended a couple meetings to make some comments. I'm also a builder of accessory dwelling units and houses in general, and so I think that's why I was invited to comment on that, and that's all I have.
Mr. Spring?
I move to have Mr. Spinelli participate in this case.
Can we have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Looney. Do you have any questions for, anyone have any questions for Mr. Spinelli?
Where's the card?
Oh, good. Mind if I read the card?
Please, that'd be great.
Questions? Okay. Conflict of interest. Do you have a substantial part of the present action?
Uh, no.
One that varies directly and substantially with the outcome?
No.
Immediate and known or conjectural and dependent on factors beyond the body's action?
No.
Significant monetarily?
Um, I, no, I would not necessarily know.
And if I may, I mean, Andre, you just testified that you may, if this were to go through, build the product that is proposed, correct?
Correct.
And so one could argue that you would, could profit directly from the regulation.
Yeah, I could possibly do that. Most of the stuff that I build is, when I have built accessory dwelling units, it's a small portion of a larger house.
Hmm.
Well, I guess.
Your point is it's not your sole source of income, you're going to depend, your livelihood is on accessory dwelling units?
No, I have no accessory dwelling units currently at work.
I think the issue that we have, and we have this commonly, and I'm about to make a similar disclosure, is that if you were ruled to not be able to participate in anything having to do with residential development, because presumably you build residential, then we wouldn't really have a reason to have people with distinct residential building knowledge on the commission. Is that right?
Yeah, it would apply to any zoning ordinance change.
Right.
You couldn't participate in any.
Okay. Do you have something, Craig? Okay. With that, I'd like to ask the commission to vote on the motion to direct Mr. Spinelli to participate in the ADU ordinance. You are directed to participate. Next up, Ms. Barker.
Nothing to disclose. Oh, excuse me, no. As Andre disclosed, I also was not in attendance at the meeting on 11/13, and will not be able to vote on the resolution for approval on the consent agenda. Other than that, no, nothing else to disclose.
Let Lori work that through, but thank you, Mitzi. Jared, anything to disclose?
Yes, also for the resolution on the consent agenda, 2017-031, I wasn't seated on the commission when that first was raised, so I won't be voting on that either.
Great, thank you. Do we have the votes for that?
That's... I'm sorry.
Just doing a little housekeeping to see if we have the votes to pass the resolution when it comes up. As for disclosures, I'd also like to make a disclosure related to case 2017-95, accessory dwelling units. Three things to say. Number one, I work for Cooking Lot Housing, and so we do build housing developments. Number two, you'll note in the packet that the ordinance came, was initiated from a group called the AEDC Live, Work, Play Housing Area of Focus. I actually sit on that group. I helped to staff it. I was not part of the subcommittee in that group to write the ordinance, but again, I am involved in that group regularly to look at housing regulations and alternatives in Anchorage. And then third, I wanted to say that I actually did receive and respond to an email from a member of the public specifically related to something on that accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and I did include a copy of that email in the record. But with that, I'd be interested in the commission's feelings on that. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I move that Commissioner Robinson participate in this issue.
And that is seconded by Mr. Looney.
Yeah, I think participating in trying to improve the city is not a grounds for disqualification. I mean, your input is important to that committee, and I don't think there's any conflict with your participation in this particular ordinance.
You want to call the question?
Yeah, I'd like to, yes. I'll call the question, please. Please vote.
All right, next up, there are two items for information items on the agenda. I think we have R&amp;M here, related to the context sensitive solutions transportation. I'll first ask the commission, are there any items, or would you like to hear from R&amp;M, or any questions related to that context sensitive solutions report?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on it. I'm really excited about the, this report. I didn't realize it was in the works, but it's long overdue, I think. I think you addressed the issues that are in that area, particularly the pedestrian and bicycle issues. I mean, it's primarily Denali and 36th Avenue are roadways for vehicles, and it doesn't really accommodate pedestrians very well with the attached five-foot sidewalks on both sides, on both roads. There's no bicycle paths. Even though it's not a, Denali is not on the bicycle plan, I think there's opportunity, though, for consideration of it. I think the reason it wasn't on the bicycle plan properly was because there was no, nothing in the plan, the long-range plan regarding reconstruction of it. And without reconstruction of that to a three-lane facility, it's really going to be difficult to do a separated sidewalk and a bicycle path. But if that happens, then I think, yeah, it should probably be added to the bicycle plan. There's some real opportunities for connecting the north residential areas across from Chester Creek by Moké Stadium, and connecting it through the neighborhood, and providing a really, really safe access into midtown via Denali. I think it's going to be really, very helpful. So, appreciate the work.
Thank you, Mr. Looney.
Yeah, so I too am excited about this project. I guess it is time to improve these links. The one thing to note, I realize this document is not really spelling out, you know, what the plan is. It's more like, here's the goals and objectives and the groundwork for the project really to come. And I do see that part of the analysis is looking at like Denali, and how it currently is, I think it's a five-lane section. Can it handle, can three lanes handle the traffic? I notice how the traffic analysis indicates that with some of the volumes that are projected for 2045, it'll be marginal whether that'll happen or not. But, so I definitely encourage us to, even if we don't have a full solution that can last all the way to 2045, that we consider things like the three-lane section that will accommodate non-motorized users, even if after, even if we have to do something different in 2045, or something in the future. So, I'm excited about doing something, and sooner rather than later. But I'm looking forward to, I guess I'll go to the open houses and watch the process of this, but I want to use the facilities soon, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Looney. Anyone else? I'd just add that I appreciate recognizing the importance of Denali Street in our midtown area. I mean, I think it connects some institutional uses, like where we are right now in Cuddy Park, and, but also the area, the commercial area north of 36th, and the area to the east of Denali, that's home to the new Rock Gym and restaurants, and as well as, I think, some development opportunities there. I think the street could be an important connector. And I would also just point out, I always love to see a road that creates a buffer for snow storage between the sidewalk and the roadway without landscaping, so we're not just putting the snow in the landscaping, we're just putting the snow where it ought to be, and keeping, having a better chance to keep those sidewalks and pathways accessible this time of year as well. So with that, thank you for the report. We look forward to the next steps. So thanks for the information item. Second information item is ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code, Table of Dimensional Standards to Correct Typographical Errors and Incorrect Cross-References. Any questions from the commission, or comments on this item?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the conclusion that this is just a addressing inconsistencies according to the code that can bypass the commission and go on to assembly. It's obviously just references that were misidentified, and this is corrected, so.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Spring, your motion is to acknowledge that this is a technical amendment in its nature, and thus bypassing the public hearing process, seconded by Ms. Barker. Is anyone else wishing to speak to this? Any objections to that motion? Hearing none, we appreciate staff carrying that motion forward to the assembly. Consent agenda, there's one resolution, and I believe we did find that Ms. Barker is able to vote on that one. So can we get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Mr. Strike, thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Barker. Any questions?
I have one correction.
Go ahead.
If I may propose, clarifying finding of fact on page 2, A3, and I'll read this, if I may, my correction. I don't believe it quite got to what I was trying to comment on in my comments. If I read it, my corrections. The draft R3A Residential Mixed-Use Ordinance addressed the community need for residential mixed-use development in a logical and cautious manner, but is somewhat limited in its applicability. The commission encourages the efforts of the planning department to expand the applicability of the R3A into other areas of the city. That may not be appropriate for the proposed seven-story height limit, but may be appropriate for a four-story height limit.
Madam Clerk, are you okay with that? And John can provide you the writing there? Are there any other, especially Mr. Strike and Ms. Barker, having moved and seconded, any objection to that language? Does that fit the recollection of our action? Thumbs up? Okay, so we'll consider that resolution as amended. Any objection to adopting the resolution? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Thank you. We have one more item on our regular agenda before the public hearing items. This is a time extension. It's case 2017-0131, Acclutna Inc., time extension request for an approved conditional use for natural resource extraction. Is there a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a five-year time extension to a conditional use for a natural resource extraction. Time extension requests in five-year increments are common and expected with these types of cases. The current conditions are substantially the same as the same, substantially the same as those which existed when the conditional use was originally approved. The planning department is recommending approval of a five-year time extension to December 31st, 2022, subject to condition to provide a watershed management services, a copy of the current DNR-approved reclamation plan and bond. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Any questions for staff?
I'm in.
Are you in there? Go ahead, Mr. Strike, sorry.
Yes, question to the chair. As I recall, when this came out five years ago, one of the questions or one of the items out there was that incident reports that they were to be compiling and be an ongoing report. Have they been keeping those up?
Yes, they have. They've provided annual monitoring reports, and there haven't been any incidents reported, and they've received a favorable review by the planning department.
So from noise, and I think one of the concerns five years ago, too, was the amount of debris that was coming up on the highway and covered loads, but we had that discussion back then, but no broken windows, windshields.
No, all of those issues have been resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for staff? Can I get a motion to approve the time extension? I can get a second. Seconded by Ms. Barker. Mr. Strike, can you speak to the, your motion?
Yeah, this motion, this proposal in front of us is consistent with their past requests for extensions. This is not out of the ordinary, it's customary. They have been, we have been keeping track with the city folks here to ensure that their incidences are addressed, that they are in compliance. This was a concern five years ago, which begged to my questions here this evening, to ensure that these were being kept up. So the concerns that we addressed five years ago are being addressed, and I'm pleased to see this move forward.
Great, thank you, Mr. Strike. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Hearing none, please vote. And that time extension is granted. There's two public hearing items that we will move into, and before I read the procedures for the public hearing, can I just, as a show of hands, and you can raise your hand twice, if that's your intent, but who intends to testify to the first case, which is the Sears or Nordstrom Rack case, just so I get a sense of who we're waiting on? Okay. And the accessory dwelling unit case? It's about even. Okay, very good, thank you. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at our meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, have 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, five minutes, and individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. First public hearing case is case 2017-124, Sears Roebuck &amp; Company, remand from the Board of Adjustment, appeal from Planning and Zoning Case 2016-23, a public hearing site plan review per AMC 2155-130, and AMC 2150-320 for a large retail establishment, the Sears Mall Nordstrom Rack in the B3 district. Could we get a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sears Roebuck &amp; Company, Seritage, seeks approval of an amendment to an existing large retail establishment site plan under the old code. The Sears Mall is a large retail sales establishment, which is deemed to have an approved site plan as it existed prior to May 8th, 2001. That's the date of adoption of large retail establishment standards. Thus, changes to the Sears Mall are reviewed under AMC 2155-130, which states that the commission shall apply the standards set out in 2150-320 in a manner proportionate to the extent of the expansion, reconstruction, renovation, or remodeling proposed. A brief history is, the Planning and Zoning Commission received a request in 2014 to amend the large retail establishment site plan in this B3 district. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and approved this request on the consent agenda on July 14th, 2014, subject to eight conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission adopted Resolution 2014-40 on August 8th, 4th, 2014. Some merchants timely filed an appeal of this decision to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment held a meeting open to the public on February 18th, 2015, as Appeal 2014-4. By unanimous vote, which was 3 to 0, the Board of Adjustment, known as BOA, exercised its independent judgment to the interpretation of municipal code, and concluded a public hearing on a limited site plan review amendment filed under 2155-130 is not required as a matter of law. The Board of Adjustment's decision was further appealed to the Superior Court of Alaska on December 2nd, 2015. The Superior Court judge ruled that the commission must hold a public hearing on an application to modify a large retail establishment. This reversed the decision of the Board of Adjustment, and remanded the case back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to hold a public hearing. So then, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June 13th, 2016, in which public testimony was heard. The hearing was postponed to July 11th, 2016, as there was a question whether the court ruling meant to hold only a public hearing portion or complete amended site plan review process. The commission was directed to review the petitioner's amended site plan application in its entirety for compliance with the code, that's old Title 21. Following this review, the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted Resolution 2016-29, which approved the amended site plan with conditions. An appeal to the Board of Adjustment was filed on August 24th, 2016. The Board of Adjustment held meetings on multiple dates, April 26th, 2017, the 27th, the 28th, and May 2nd, 2017. This all fell under Appeal 2016-1. In that outcome, the unanimous vote 3 to 0, the Board of Adjustment reversed Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution 2016-29 in its entirety, and remanded the case back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a decision in compliance with the code and the direction provided in findings, conclusions, and decision. The Board of Adjustment's findings, conclusions, and decision dated May 2nd, 2017, is provided in full to the Planning and Zoning Commission in this staff packet. So the original proposal was the petitioners renovating a portion of the Sears store. The principal use on the entire site is a 308,428 square foot mall comprised of retail stores and a supermarket. Cars is now closed, and that space is currently vacant. The proposed renovation of the building facade does not increase the floor area of the mall, as the renovation takes place within the existing space. Thus, no additional parking spaces are required. The project includes the addition of a 683 square foot loading dock and screened trash receptacle along the north side of the existing Sears store. This is already constructed. Cost of compliance. The commission has the authority to review improvements that do not exceed 10% of the overall cost of the renovation. So, the original staff report stated the following. The total exterior cost of the renovation is $334,600. The applicant indicated this amount is for the loading dock addition and not interior renovations, which are not to be included per AMC 2155-130A. 10% of this amount is $33,460. Now, the Board of Adjustment, Appeal 2016-1, Decision B dot 4, found that the total cost of the renovation, including the interior renovations, are to be counted in the 10% cost amount. This is a change. The applicant provided a revised total project cost in the amount of $2,097,826. 10% of this amount minus the $33,460 already spent on improvements is So in regards to AMC 2155-130, which is large retail establishments, the standard set out in 2150-320 shall apply to the expansion, reconstruction, renovation, or remodeling proposed. The commission shall consider Standard 1, whether strict application of any standard would result in peculiar or exceptional difficulties of work and undue hardship of the owner of the property. So strict application with the requirements regarding of AMC 2150-320P1 regarding the overhang awning on the east facade should be required. As currently designed and built under the petitioner's plans, the awnings meets the requirements. Strict application with more structural building requirements would create practical difficulties, given the limitation of the Sears store improvements and the shape size of the existing building shell, and thus would cause undue hardship for the property owner. Although it should be noted that improvements were made to the south side that provide better facade articulation and pedestrian scale interest, in addition to wall signage panels and several landscape planners. Condition number two, whether the proposed design and site plan satisfies the intent of this section. The petitioner's original proposed design and site plan, which has been built, satisfies the intent of this section as well or better than would be strict compliance with standards set forth in 2150-320. So the petitioner's plans call for renovation of the portion of the Sears store and an addition of a 683-foot square foot loading dock with the screened trash receptacle. New landscaping replaces existing landscape that has been removed, new entries, and the new loading dock meet the standards. The new window on the north side is an improvement. The original application was limited by $33,460 to be used towards improvements, which did not go very far in making significant changes to the property. With an increased budget of $176,323, the petitioner should be able to make even more changes towards moving this large retail establishment closer to conformity with the adopted standards. Following the July 14th, 2014, P&amp;Z Commission public hearing, the petitioner submitted an updated elevation plan showing an overhang awning along at least 60% of the east elevation building length. This satisfies the condition of approval from PCC's previous resolution, and brings this site into compliance with overhang awning standards found in AMC 2150-320P1. Standard number three, relaxation of requirement would impose greater negative impact on surrounding property. The intense commercial quality of the surrounding property, relaxation of some of the requirements, for example, the requirement to vary roof lines and heights, should not have a greater negative impact on surrounding properties. Standard four, whether the proposed design and site plan brings the site into greater compliance with standards set forth in 2150-320 than the existing structure. As noted under number two above, the new elements that accommodate the creation of new retail space, such as entries and loading docks, meet the large retail establishment standards. So under the original application, changes to the site were limited to additional landscaping in front of a loading dock to screen the view from Northern Lights Boulevard. The original application, as said before, was limited by the, only the $33,460 to be used towards improvements, and that didn't go very far in making changes to the property. So with the $176,323, they should be able to make more changes. Condition five, to grant fire existing large retail establishments and set forth standards for the renovation, which encourage conformity to the new ordinance with undue economic hardship. Full compliance with large retail establishment standards would require such significant changes to both the building and the site that would cause undue economic hardship to the owner. Under AMC 2150-320, which is the public hearing site plan review for large retail establishments, some of their standards, Standard B, which is vehicular access. Vehicular access to the mall is from Northern Lights Boulevard, Benson Boulevard, and the Seward Highway. This meets the requirement for access from a street designated collector greater. Traffic impacts. A TI is not required, as the proposed renovation would not significantly alter traffic patterns. New retail floor area is not proposed, so does presume the number of trips to and from the site will remain generally the same. Drainage. Drainage: The petitioner was required to submit a site grading drainage plan when applying for building permit. Visual noise buffers, like as stated before, given the surrounding uses, major roads, retail stores, there should be little noise generated on the site that would impact nearby land uses. The visual impact of the new loading dock area is partially buffered by a screening wall, and as noted, staff has recommended adding landscaping along Northern Lights Boulevard, which would help further screen the loading area. Outdoor storage or display areas: The petitioner's narrative stated that there are no plans for any outdoor storage or display as part of this project. Trash collection and recycling: Screened trash receptacle enclosure is proposed on the north side of the building. Enclosure features architectural elements of the building. That's been constructed. Still storage and removal: Petitioner's narrative stated that they will be plowed and removed from the site. Parking: Parking is sufficient and meets the standards. An overall total of 1,184 parking spaces is provided, which is in excess of 159 spaces. Pedestrian access. So, this is J, pedestrian access. In the previous staff report from 2014, this definition, which is found in code, was missing a sentence, and I'm going to read the pedestrian access code citation standard in its entirety. The establishment shall provide sufficient accessibility, safety, and convenience to pedestrians, customers, employees. Unobstructed sidewalks shall link the site to existing public sidewalks, its entrances, adjacent transit stops, and abutting residential and commercial areas. Sidewalks shall also be provided along the full length of any building where it joins a parking lot. Sufficient sidewalks shall also be provided or barriers which shall be provided between parked cars and buildings to prevent vehicles from protruding into reasonable pedestrian passage. Sidewalks shall be separated from adjacent streets by an area sufficient for snow storage to provide a buffer for pedestrian from vehicle traffic. So, landscaping and curbing are provided to the north building elevation, which provides a more defined vehicle circulation route and provides a barrier between pedestrians and vehicles. A two-bar handle rail is installed between the sidewalk and the loading bay pit. In the 2016 June meeting, Sarretage submitted an alternative sidewalk design. The municipal traffic engineer has made comment on this design. Traffic has stated that the proposed concept design for a walkway at Nordstrom Rack that crosses the dumpster enclosure and loading dock area would be acceptable design and appears to be compliant with the requirements of Title 21. All the segments that are parallel with the vehicle driveways are raised, and all the segments that cross vehicular driveways are striped. The pedestrian connection does not cross the loading dock and trash pickup. Does cross, let me restate that. The pedestrian connection does cross the loading dock and trash pickup, but that is not prohibited by code. Typically, deliveries and trash pickup do not occur during peak hours and occur less frequently than any other traffic. So, the conflicts with pedestrians are minimal when compared to crossing a typical driveway. Community spaces, which is K, all community spaces are provided internal to the mall's Sears. L, delivery and loading spaces. The loading dock addition will be located on the north side of the building. Materials and paint used for the design will mitigate the visual impact by blending it with the existing building. Exterior signs: Exterior signage will be provided under future tenants and a permit separately by the building owner and tenants. The petitioner installed wayfinding between Nordstrom Rack and the mall. Standard N, outdoor lighting. The application notes that downlighting will be incorporated in new awnings and entry features. Northern design elements: So, the east side of the mall entry will have a new entry feature that will project out in addition to the existing recessed entry. This feature should provide some degree of weather protection. The northeast and west sides of the existing Sears store have awnings projecting over the sidewalks, which is in conformity with this section of Title 21. Aesthetic characteristics: The existing Sears store entry will be remodeled with a parapet to break up the front face. Existing overhangs are to remain, and a new paint scheme is proposed to reinforce the building's identity and tie the renovations together with existing upgrades on the south side of the mall. So, the application states that new entrances are proposed to be built on the west elevation to provide opportunities for individual retailers to have specific identities while providing a common backdrop. The site plan enhances the street-level human scale by adding a storefront window to the north elevations. This addition, coupled with the loading dock, will break up the long building wall on the north side of the Sears store and provide similar architectural treatment to the mall building. To address the east-facing elevation that currently has overhang awnings along approximately 80% of the facade, the applicant constructed awnings and covered entrances that exceed the code minimum of 60% of the building. So, the applicant satisfied the condition of approval originally to provide an updated elevation plan showing an overhang awning along at least 60% of the east elevation building length. Therefore, the site is in compliance with the code. Detailed features: The exterior renovation is an improvement from the existing facade on the north and west elevations. The northwest corner will have views into the storefront from the proposed window, which breaks up the mass effect, and allows for interior to be visible to passersby's during the winter months. The existing awning canopy does a decent job of reducing the mass effect of the building wall and provides protection from the elements. Three, roofs: The roof design does not provide variations of roof lines or heights, however, the renovation includes parapet walls at the storefront entrances and is aesthetically pleasing and visually interesting without incorporating a varying roof line. Materials and colors: The object of the proposed improvements for this project is to be consistent with the previous facade changes that are already completed on the south side of the mall. Standard five, entryways: The entryways will be defined to orient customers and is aesthetically pleasing and inviting and should provide protection from the winter weather. Screening of mechanical equipment on the rooftop. So, the screening that exists on the north side of the rooftop of the Sears adequately blocks the mechanical equipment. The east side of the rooftop contains two large pieces of mechanical equipment that are not screened and are visible from the ground, a portion of them. These two large pieces of mechanical equipment could be screened using a portion of the required 10% towards improvements. So, the petitioner has completed all the eight original conditions as required by the commission in the Resolution 2014-40, which granted them approval for construction per the site plan. The Nordstrom Rack is currently open as a retail establishment. On remand from the Superior Court, the P&amp;Z adopted a second resolution, which is 2016-29, again approving the amended site plan with condition. The petitioner has met those conditions. The decision by the Board of Adjustment, 2016-1, reversed Planning and Zoning Commission resolution in its entirety and remanded the case back to Planning and Zoning for a decision in compliance with code. The Board of Adjustment' findings state that the interior only remodels would not require a limited site plan review. If a renovation project involves interior and exterior changes, it requires a limited site plan review. The intent of the code is to move the property in the direction of conformity with the code, and the applicant cannot increase the nonconformity of the property. The applicant's cost to address nonconforming aspects of the property, thereby bringing the property further in the direction of conformity, shall not exceed 10% of their total project cost. The board found that the 10% calculation is to be based upon the cost of the interior and exterior project. This is a change from the original staff report that only required 10% of the exterior cost. The Board of Adjustment also found that, and here's an important statement here, the Board of Adjustment also found that the Planning and Zoning Commission may consider and require interior changes to a site plan. Now, as proposed, Title 21 does not require interior access to the larger retail establishment for this project, unless planning is not recommending an interior connection be provided. 355 public hearing notices were mailed on October 9th, 2017. There were comments received from the public, which are included, and the planning department did not receive a response from Midtown Community Council. With that being said, the department recommends approval of the amended site plan review for Sears store tenant improvements for Nordstrom Rack located on the north side of Sears Mall, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 9. With nine is, has been corrected, and I'll read out what condition number nine is. Submit to planning: A plan and cost estimate that satisfies AMC 2155-130 requirement that the cost of compliance with the standards set forth in AMC 2150-320 shall not exceed 10%, which is $176,323 of the project's cost. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The current planning manager is here, as well as a representative from legal.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dell. Questions for staff? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, so you listed the number of improvements that, in addition to the previous requirements that the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for. Do you know what the total is for those improvements?
Through the commission, Mr. Spring, are you referring to the $33,000 originally that had to spend?
The, no, the 176,320.
Oh, no. There's, that's a condition, and that's why it says submit to planning. There's not been anything submitted to us where it's going to have a breakdown of where they're going to spend that 176,000. However, it does have to be moving towards conformity within the 2150-320 standards.
If I can tell you, but you said it couldn't exceed that, so how do we know it doesn't exceed that?
Can you restate that? Is it going to exceed, like, is it going to be 200,000?
Well, yeah, I think you said that the cost of those improvements can't exceed 10%. So, it couldn't exceed 176,000, correct?
That is correct.
How do we know, then, that what you listed is, exceeds it or not?
I'm not quite following. Through the chair, Mr. Spring, they can choose to exceed that 176,000 if they wish, but we cannot require them to exceed that. So, they have to, they have to spend 176,000. But if they choose to spend more, bring in the property into conformity, then they can do that if they wish.
Then, the other side of the question is, I have some ideas for additional improvements. Do I, I don't know if I have room for that under the, you know, under this cap here. Through the chair, Mr. Spring, I believe you could, those additional improvements would have to move, be moving the site towards conformity found under 2150-320.
Okay, assume they are.
If we assume they are, then you could, I believe you could make a recommendation that with that 10%, you would like to see perhaps these items.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chair, but our approval is going to be the application and the narrative and all those things that were listed in the narrative as new improvements, correct? So, they have to fill those improvements. They don't have a choice once we approve it based on the narrative and whatever. So, if I add something else and it's above the 10%, then they, I don't know if they are going to be required to do it or not.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, as long as whatever you're requiring brings the property in the direction of conformity and doesn't exceed the 176,000, you can require it.
But I don't know if it exceeds 176,000.
Well, that's the problem, that's the difficulty here.
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Spinelli.
Yes, through the chair. You said that they, if they can, they can exceed the 176,000 if they chose to. If they could comply with all the requirements, they don't have to spend the 176,000 if it costs less, correct?
Through the chair, Mr. Spinelli, yes. If they can bring the property fully into conformity with current regulations, spending less than 176,000, then they can do that. I don't think that that's the case here, being as though there's a pretty significant portion of the property that's legally nonconforming. But if they could, then they, they could spend less.
I would like to add to that that's for the whole Sears Mall. It is pretty deficient. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Gardner.
I have a question to try and. Sorry. I have a question to try to make sure I'm understanding kind of some of the standards that we're supposed to be applying here as we're looking at this. And in one of the materials we received from this, I don't know, I received this giant binder here, that included a letter, and I don't know if you have that, if you know what I'm referring to in the front of it, that was addressed to us from, I guess Linda Boggs, the Director of Marketing, Carr Gottstein Properties.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's in the front there. And on the third page, I guess the second page, it identifies with five checkbox kind of some considerations. It says to approve a site plan amendment that does not move the mall away from conformity. The commission will need to show that contrary to, well, will need to show the proposed project does not, and then it lists five things. I don't, I guess I don't, and I can ask them maybe as well later, but I don't know if staff has any, has looked at these and has any thoughts as to where these come from, just from my understanding, or has a position on these particular factors?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, I think, I think what Ms. Boggs is arguing here is that by removing the sidewalk along the north side of the building, we are in some way moving in the wrong direction, so moving the property further out of conformity or making it less safe. The planning department would contend or argue that by removing the sidewalk, it has no bearing on the approval, and that, and that the, that portion of the site would be conforming. So, I think it's a difference of opinion, and if you want clarification from Ms. Boggs, you could certainly ask her when she testifies.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was something, yeah, I guess I can do that. And, and I guess relatedly, I wanted to ask what staff's position was in the, the Board of Adjustments' decision in their conclusions at the end, this is page 21 of the packet that you prepared. In paragraph C, when it refers to the flexible framework in 2155-130 not allowing the grandfathered LRE to move further from compliance, and then it identifies that as kind of the no-backsliding rule, is that viewed as no-backsliding with respect to any particular requirement or factor? Or is it like a broader, more holistic, kind of in-to-to type view of backsliding?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, I'm not sure I, I understand your question.
Well, I guess.
It's a difficult question to ask, and I'm sorry, can you clarify?
No, yeah, that's fine. I'm just wondering if this concept of no-backsliding, just from my own understanding of how these factors works, means that if there's any single aspect of the project that moves away from conformity, even if there are other factors-
Sure.
-that separately move it towards conformity.
Yeah, I think the planning department's position is that we're not moving in the wrong direction. And in fact, I would say that to a certain extent, we are moving in the direction of conformity, at least that the site plan intends to.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add to that, I think it really is that, that those five standards, it's, my question is really related to the, to the 10% rule, and I think they're two separate things. I see the five standards as what we could apply in particular to the renovations themselves, given that it's an existing building. 10% is somewhere else to move the overall site into conformity. It's a given that any new work will comply unless it's deemed to be impractical for that new work. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
That is correct.
I, you know, it was interesting in the revised staff packet, the language that you added was helpful. Sidewalk shall be provided along the full length of any building where it joins a parking lot. Clearly, that's the case on the north side of the wall. Can I ask, before the work was done, was there a parking lot along the full side of that building?
Mr. Chair, yes, there was parking along that full side.
Is Sears even, or Sarretage or the applicant suggesting that the sort of amended sidewalk enhancement that's being proposed is part of moving the site into compliance or just ensuring that there's no backsliding?
Mr. Chairman, I think Sarretage is, and I think they're here to speak to why they rec, or why they offered the sidewalk, but I would guess that the reason why they're offering it is because they heard concerns from the public about the sidewalk not being provided on the north side. They found a way to make it happen. They drafted a site plan that showed that, and I think they're willing to do it. So, I don't know that it's an issue of backsliding or what have you, but I think that they're, they're offering it because they heard complaints or concerns from the public. public.
Do we, so if we, if we were to make a determination that the, in fact, it's just putting back a sidewalk that ought to have remained in the first place, and therefore that work really shouldn't be constituted as part of the, part of the 10%, how do we, I think this goes back to Mr. Spring's, you know, questions, how do we really know what's on the table for moving the site into further conformity versus what's just part of the new addition anyway and has to comply?
Yeah, planning's position is that the sidewalk would not be counted towards the $176,000, so they'd have to come up with other improvements and spend that $176,000 elsewhere.
And, and do you specifically know what that's proposed to be?
We do not, we do not. They haven't come to us with a proposal. If the commission wants to see certain things done, then they could ask for them, assuming they don't exceed the $176,000 required.
But the point is, in our application, we don't necessarily, with this new information, have in front of us the proposal of what constitutes the 10% that moves the site into conformity. So, so in effect, we're at a bit of a loss, other than agreeing on a number of what that work's going to be, is that right?
Agreed.
Okay. Couple other questions, Mr. Looney, then Mr. Strike.
Yeah, actually, so, just for clarification, we talked about the backside, or really, the foundation of a comparison, I guess, is, of course, you realize that some of these improvements have been built, built already, but I'm assuming that really everything we're, this, this new site plan is being compared to what the facility looked like in 2014, I guess, before anything was done. So really, everything's compared to that. And like, it was just brought up a little bit ago, the, the north side of the building at that time had a continuous sidewalk along the whole, the whole length. So really, everything is compared to what it was prior to that 2014, or initial hearing. Is, is that my understanding?
Through the chair, Mr. Looney, that is correct.
Okay. And I guess, I'm also confused, because we've thrown around this, the, the concept about the $33,000 you have to subtract from the 2.00, I guess $210,000, which would be 10% of 2.1 million dollars, but, why, why can't we just use the 10% of the total cost of the, the upgrade? I guess you're always assuming that the $33,000 has already been spent for something that we've already approved.
Correct.
But it's almost, if we're going to start, look at this thing from scratch, from a new, it almost looks like we ought to look at the 10% of the total improvement cost, which is 10% of 2.1 million dollars. Am I reading that wrong?
Through the chair, Mr. Looney, you can do that. Obviously, they've already spent the $33,000, so we would have to subtract that, but certainly you could require 10%, and then we would subtract the 33, because they've already spent it on landscaping.
Yeah, I guess, potato, potato, I guess. They've also built a lot of things that we're here to talk about today, too.
Yeah.
That is correct. Mr. Strike, then Ms. Barker.
Thank you, and through the chair, looking at the language of the sidewalk requirement that's been added, and specifically, it says sidewalk shall be provided along the full length of any building where it joins a parking lot. So in theory, with the new loading dock in place, now I'm playing semantics here, two sides of that loading dock no longer adjoin the parking lot, they adjoin the driveway.
Go ahead, Dave. Through, through the chair, Mr. Strike, so, right, a, a loading dock's an enjoyable, enjoyable right of a commercial property. They've removed that parking and put in a loading dock, therefore, you don't need a sidewalk in front of that.
Per code. Per code. Because if that argument were not to hold true, then the other two sides, the other side of the Sears Mall, where the back area, the loading dock area that they have there for the pickup, there's no sidewalk there.
Correct.
There's no sidewalk behind the old Cars Grocery, where that loading dock is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And from that standpoint, the fact that they're promoting to go and put an elevated and put park and put sidewalks in, the comment I heard is that you're looking that it would not apply towards the monies that they would be contributing to upgrade.
That is correct.
I would possibly argue, since that they're not required, that we would allow that to be part of the dollar.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, the reason why we're saying that you can't count that is because it's not a code requirement. So the money being spent towards bringing the property into conformity has to be done with code requirements. Since it's not a code requirement, they don't get credit for it.
Thank you.
Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does the code make any kind of distinction between an enclosed mall or a singular big-box entity, or kind of a mashup of the two, where, where customers might have to go outside to access certain parts of the large retail establishment?
Through the chair, Ms. Barker, no, the, the old code does not address anything in that, that, that type of mall. Those are types of mall, and it doesn't, there's no standards that address that.
And there's no distinction among them?
No.
Thank you.
I'll leave that for now. Okay, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? And my intent from, from a process standpoint is to open public hearing, and we can, of course, clarify with staff along the way, but then, following public hearing, is to have any final questions with staff before we enter into deliberations on that. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing, starting with the petitioner. Please state your name for the record. You have 10 minutes to begin, and please let us know how much time you'd like to reserve for rebuttal.
Good evening, my name is Tim Potter with Dyer Engineers, representing Saratage tonight, although they are in the audience, and more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'd like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal, at a minimum. The staff's done a great job, so I don't think I need to go into a whole lot of detail about all of the different items. What I have done, for your convenience, is to try and have handouts that can go out to you, Michelle, that really cover previous information, one of them being the second iteration showing the revision to the pedestrian routes and how people would get around on the site. The larger eight and a half or 11 by 17 copies are the actual signed permit package that was approved by the city, and they show much upgraded, more architectural and artistic signage that were developed to go along with that signage plan that you originally saw and approved. With that, I think I'll just try and target several of the areas that were brought up and discussed, because, like the staff, I believe that we have met all of the, the requirements. And I should note that the $33,000 that's been so discussed, that is a percentage of what the number was that everybody thought we needed to spend the first go-around before the interior improvements were added on to the deal. So what you'll be looking at will be a variety, and I'll discuss a variety of the things that we can put in to make up the difference. But the work that was done to date exceeds that $33,000. The additional work that would come into play to make up the magic 10% that is not supposed to be exceeded would be made up of a variety of things, once all of the accounting had been done for the previous work, that would actually count. So some of the items that I heard tonight were that the, the existing 40-year-plus-old facility had a variety of things, and I, I appreciate Mr. Strike's comments about how there's different parts of this major complex that don't comply at all and don't have walkways. And that is the reality. The other reality is, is in the changing marketplace, Sears has resized, and in their opinion, right-sized, and it's an ongoing process across the country, and in, in fact, globally. So there are numerous stores that are closing, numerous stores that have been modified in size, so that they can be successful within the marketplace that they are located. And in that vein, the reality is that they vacated a significant portion, about 40,000 square feet, of the area that Sears had previously occupied. And Saratage's responsibility as a property owner is to keep the property leased and occupied and producing revenue, obviously. And in coming forward, they had a tenant, North Sum Rack, that had specific requirements, and one of them was to have a singular entry for a variety of reasons, and I can go into that more in question and answer. But the reality is, this was their, properties were changing, this mall is going to change over time even more than it has now. Things that you should be concerned about is the amount of parking, how the whole process of the project looks, how it's going to be retrofitted over time to come more into conformity and compliance all the way around. Think of the Sears Mall from all sides, that entire property. There's a dearth of landscaping on most of the perimeter of the entire property. That can be augmented over time as different projects come forward to you for approval. So this will be a process over time to try and get there. The other thing, from a parking standpoint, when you're thinking about entries and the logic of putting different entries at different places, in retail, especially in a highly vehicular user retail, there's about a 300-foot radius from each doorway, that is where people park, and that's just human nature. So if you were to, say, slide the North Sum Rack doorway or entry to the south to try and get closer to the Sears entry, now you'd be creating a significant congestion point at that location, and there'd be nobody parking over next to Northern Lights Boulevard in the corner, where now you see North Sum Rack folks parking.
You want to use more of your rebuttal time?
Just, just quickly, the artwork that we have here is also in your package, showing the building elevations. We believe that they fit in, they create a human scale. We've done everything that we can. I guess in, in closing this part of it, I would like in rebuttal and question and answer, a number of the commission members indicated that they had ideas about what could be upgraded to bring the property more into conformity or compliance. We'd like to hear that, and in question and answer, I'll certainly go through a list of things that we believe are on the table, and we'd like a little guidance from you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have four minutes and 20 seconds remaining. Mitzi, are you, are you still in the queue from before?
No.
Okay. Mr. Strike.
Thank you, and through the chair, I do note the extensive amount of attention given to signage in the pamphlet that you hired, that you put forth. Thank you. And I say that because initially, when first proposed, signage was an issue, and personally, the signage that went up, I don't believe met the intent of what we were looking for back before. So obviously, this is being readdressed, and I appreciate the readdressing.
Mr. Strike, appreciate that, and, and while I, I see that you noticed that not all the signage that was presented to you at the last hearing was installed. And in fact, the sidewalk, the detailed lighting on the screening wall for that northern-end sidewalk and pedestrian corridor was ready and permitted, so that it would have been usable all of this year and last year. It was to be completed the fall before that, so over a year and a half ago. And through another lawsuit, which I have copies of, there was an injunction so that that work could not go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I think, in general, I think the sidewalk improvement has some good merits to it, especially the lighting on that section. But I, what I, one of the problems I have is the gaps there, where there's just crosswalk paint, and, you know, if wintertime, it's not going to be visible. I mean, you won't know that there's an actual walkway there, it just ends, and that's it. Any ideas how that could be made to be more pedestrian-friendly, or at least give some clue to pedestrians that the sidewalk continues? Because it's not, it won't be clear for, that it is a sidewalk, and strike for seven months of the year.
Several things. One will be doing a further evaluation if, in fact, those areas can actually be raised a little bit, more like a raised platform or crosswalk platform that you do. We have to look at the drainage and what impacts there might be, because if it doesn't drain very good, then during the winter, you obviously have some other impacts that are an issue as well. So I don't want to get into the issue of heating and that, and what, what that does trying to do a remote area like that. Maintenance is the other big key. So between looking at the ability to modify the, the height of the actual walking surface, so it may be several inches above the actual road surface, much like some of the pedestrian crossings that we have in town, it could be done in a textured concrete as well, so that there at least is, is some component. But again, it may be something where there's some modified warning signs and instructional signage as to where that goes. There could even be other items. If you have any thoughts, I'd be more than happy to listen to those.
Actually, I remember something you proposed a long time ago, must have been 10 years ago or more.
Uh-oh.
And I forget what project it involved, but you were all excited about lighting, inset lighting in the, in the surface of a road.
Northwood Avenue, yes.
What's that?
Northwood Avenue.
Yeah, might have been. Well, maybe. But, yeah, that could give some, you know, I don't know if it's feasible, I haven't seen it done in this town, but if you would delineate the sidewalk area pretty well.
We did try it, we thought it was definitely worth the experiment, and that was to pull an idea from Kirkland-Washington, where they actually had, in the raised platform walkway, in the leading edge, they had implanted LED lights. And when you, when it was nighttime or dark, they would automatically come on, and you could actually have a demarcation of where that was. And we ran into continuing issues of between snow, ice, freeze saw, and grater blades, trying to make sure that the leading edge of that, that point would not have those continued impact issues. So the technology is not quite there for subarctic conditions, but even 10 years ago, I'm, I'm still thinking that that is an answer of some type.
My other suggestion is, and this is where I'm kind of frustrated, because I don't know what you're really proposing, and what we could swap out or anything, I don't, I don't have a clue, but I like the landscaping that was put in, the replacement landscaping, I think it was nice, and it really makes a big difference on Northern Lights Boulevard, a big difference. Now, my concern is, or my issue is that that needs to be extended to the Seward Highway, because it's just like, the rest of the parking lot from the east entrance to Sears to the road is nothing, there's no landscaping at all. To me, that would be the best improvement you can make to bring it into conformity with the major site plan review.
As long as you've brought up the issue, I would agree that seeing what has been put in now compared to what's been there forever, and, and on both sides currently, it's shocking what a difference it makes, because it makes everything even look worse than it used to. Landscape is, is definitely one of the items that we have on the table as a pool to figure out what the best use of space and landscaping. We'll need to do a detailed survey to figure out just exactly where those parking spaces are relative to the property line, the right-of-way, right-of-way improvements with the walkway that's there, to determine if we can actually put anything there on property without knocking out that entire row of parking spaces. Or if we can work with DOT to get a right-of-way permit for beautification and do a shared deal, so the impact on property may not be so bad. Or we'll look at clustering several parking spaces together and doing an intermittent. Right now, the effectiveness of the buffer that we built is pretty nice. Intermittent, you know, three-space landscape areas would not be quite as effective, but it would definitely be better than what's there now. So that's something that we'd study. But landscaping is one of the items on the table. Additional detailed human-scale lighting, awnings on the west face of the building that was redone, those one to three commercial spaces, potentially putting some additional coverage there for Northern Design. And, let's see, what else do I have? We have consideration both there on the west face and on the North Sum Rack front edge of- edge of putting in some interesting seating that would be community space. That's a 10-foot-wide walkway on the east face of the building. There's adequate space there to put some seating. It's in a really tough zone from an inebriate standpoint, given the traffic that we watch go through the property that don't want to walk on Northern Lights because it doesn't get maintained. That we would interject and look at something that's a little bit different, that the seating would be slightly separated and of different elevations so they are not comfortable to try and sleep on. And it would add some color and some texture to that area because when you go south of the Nordstrom Rack entry, there's a pretty flat face under the awning space. That could be dressed up with some color and texture. So of kind of those list of things or other thoughts that you have, you know, we're here to actually seek approval for a project that's effectively constructed, but we would like to make sure that it works good with the community. And we look forward to showing you what's on the table and get some direction as to, as we work through this accounting against the dollar amount, where do you think we would get the biggest bang for the buck in pulling that property more into conformance and compliance with the community standards?
I got at least one more question for you, Mr. Potter, Ms. Barker. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions, somewhat related, somewhat unrelated. Prior to the construction of these improvements on the north side of the mall, this, there was an overhang. I mean, it wasn't a very pleasant space. It was the north side of the building. It was a treacherous parking lot. Some of those conditions are climatic and we can't change those. But now we have a situation where the pedestrian is forced to come out from under the building overhang into an area where the crosswalk is a crosshatch that may or may not be visible certain times of the year. I don't think I'd walk on it without my ice plugs right now. So I'm kind of wondering what other kinds of things might be able to be done to make that a little more sheltered for pedestrians? Is there a possibility extending an overhang or creating a covered area such as sometimes there are at airports for people to go, you know, out into an unsheltered area to get onto an aircraft? And my second question actually has to do with the two alternative entrances here to the mall. And I'm looking at this page here. Has there been any kind of a foot traffic count to determine how many pedestrians are using one entrance to the mall versus the one of going through Sears? I mean, how many people are going around the north side of the building and going outdoors versus taking the little more covered path and winding their way through the Sears store into the mall? Do we know that?
I don't have a current count. I know that there were videos taken when the Rack first opened. That are, I think, still up on the website. That, it showed a lot of people walking along the north side. We heard at the last hearing, when we presented the signage plan and the alternate for a raised walkway on part of it with specialty lighting and that, that there were a lot of people that didn't know that they could go through Sears Mall all the way to the east side and then walk undercover to the Nordstrom Rack. When you go into Sears now, you do have to kind of walk around by the jewelry section and that. It's not a straight shot and there's no visible connection. And that's what we were going to try and do with the signage to get people out that way. Because that is indoor. They don't, you don't have to walk outside because the hours of the mall are basically the same as the Nordstrom Rack has and you can get through there. If we would have been able to actually initiate and put the signs up, I think it would be much different. Went out there and looked after this most recent snow and there are evidence of footprints on the north side, not like it was when the Rack first opened. I imagine during Christmas shopping, there's a ton of people that park everywhere there and during the rest of the time, most of the people that are parking in the area to the north of the building are employees. And that was done specifically to try and keep people that were not going in and out to be a conflict, but that were parked there while they were on the job. So we've done those attempts. I don't know what the load is, but I think it would change dramatically if we were allowed accepting this injunction to go ahead and put that in. And during rebuttal, we'll show you some other evidence of what we think will happen in the future.
Yeah, we think it would be in Sears' best interest to vector people through their store and into the mall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Mr. Potter, is your expectation that we approve a site plan without fully understanding what those improvements are that would move the site into 10%, you know, 10% towards conformity? I mean, how are we as a commission to act on it without knowing costs or what the actual alternatives are and just sort of sending it off to staff to negotiate it?
I think that if you would like to identify the areas that you're most interested in and most considered would be moving the whole project more towards conformance or compliance, prioritize those, indicate what they are. Let us work with our own design team and the staff, get cost estimates from contractors and work it out. And whether before that condition is signed off or after, if we work it out with the staff and bring back that and let you see what it is.
And finally, you know, just direct question, why no internal connection? I mean, aside from the fact, I know you're going to give me a retail response of that it's easier to control it, but I mean, we've been at this for a long time. Clearly, there's adjacent neighbors that are going to testify here tonight that it would be more convenient and conducive to their line of business. So just as owners, why not?
Why not? I can't speak specifically for Nordstrom. I can tell you that they did indicate that if they were required to have a second entrance, they would not have signed the lease. So they would not be there. That's a reality.
Can I just ask, do they have any Nordstrom Rack stores that have multiple entrances?
Yes.
Okay. So they just don't like two in Alaska or what?
I think if you ask many of them in circumstances that are different at different locations around the country. I mean, where I grew up in Bellevue, there was a Nordstrom Rack in Factoria and it was retrofitted into a mall much like this. And actually, it has mall walkways at angle. And you can go in from the mall, which is kind of a secondary entry. And the main entry is on the south side of that building, much like this is. Are circumstances different and looking at a tight market? If you have to employ additional employees, have additional cash registers, have additional loss of merchandise because now you've got two openings in the vault to try and secure, your losses are higher, your cost to manage and employ people is higher. So you're at an extreme disadvantage.
Finally, the vacant retail space, since we have you here, that's on the west side. I think that's the one you were talking about, potentially putting awnings on as one solution, which would benefit not just the route, pedestrian route, but whatever future site. How many square feet is that?
How many square feet? It is close to about 8,000 to 9,000 square feet, I believe.
So it's, if you come in with a building permit, that's not going to trigger a, the same review here due to the size of that space?
No, it is not.
Okay. Great. Seeing nobody else in the queue, you have four minutes and 20 seconds, a very Alaskan number these days, in, for rebuttal. And I would ask that we now open for the public hearing. And again, remember to come forward and state your name and please help us by spelling it for the record. If you're with an organization, again, five minutes, otherwise three minutes. And I just would caution everybody, when the little yellow light goes off, there's a minute left and we ask that you rap at the bell. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Linda Boggs, B-O-G-G-S. And thank you for having us back. As I see it, we are back here again today because the Board of Adjustment felt that staff had given you bad information and that the conformity issues in this case had not been adequately addressed in your resolution. In addition to ruling that the 2009 department memo was illegal, a memo which was the basis for much of the direction you were getting from staff, the board also voiced concerns about other areas in the previous staff report that are exactly the same as this one. In their meeting on 4/26, the board criticized the staff report for condensing all of Section 2155130 into two sentences, which the board chair says gives the wrong direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He stressed the importance of this section, noting that it's the underpinning for the entire proceeding and that impairing it down and putting the emphasis where they do, the staff report summary does not do it justice at all. Also of concern to the board was the lack of discussion by the commission about whether the proposed site plan moves the mall away from conformity. And this staff report doesn't give you much direction there either. It is still focused on the loading dock and avoids the major issues that our testimony has addressed. In their meeting, Board Member Dwayne Adams stated that a well-crafted resolution should have addressed each of the standards and discussed the conformity with the requirements they impose, especially since the nut of this whole thing is whether there was backsliding. There are a lot of comments on the record about backsliding. Some of the ones here are the ones that struck me as the most telling. These were comments that the commissioners made when they first saw this proposal, but you are misinformed as to your power to fix it. When this plan was introduced in 2014, Mr. Odell told you that if this was a new design review, the pedestrian access would be a big issue and would need to be resolved. He also told you that the reason it was not a focus in this case was that your ability to enforce these issues was limited to the 10% cap. We now know that to be wrong. The Board of Adjustment decision is telling you that staff was wrong, that you cannot allow the site to move away from conformity. I urge you to reject this plan and tell Saratage they must come back with one that meets the standards of the code. Sears got themselves into this mess by building without an approved site plan. Let them figure out how to get themselves out.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Any questions? Can I ask, in your opinion, what could they do to meet the standards of the code?
I think the pedestrian access and convenience standards mean that any shopper in the mall should be able to reach all the stores from inside the mall, covered and warm. That's how we feel that that standard can be upheld. I think anything that's different, going outside, walking, you know, a block and a half to get to Nordstrom, makes that site less accessible for customers and to me, that's backsliding.
And you believe that the code specifically addresses that issue, not that it's a business decision?
No, I think the code specifically addresses that. It says that a property, one of these sites with the big box ordinance cannot get less convenient, less accessible. That would be backsliding.
So it's the fact that there's a change, not the fact that they have external access? That's your testimony?
That it's only external access, that our shop, it's not a mall anymore.
But I mean, plenty of malls today are built with only external access.
But you can't compare it to other malls. You have to compare this site to how it was before the change.
That was my question.
Yes.
Is you're testifying that because you used to be able to get into Sears from the inside.
You have to look at this site and whether it's moving away or towards conformity. And I think it's moving away.
So your thoughts on the vacant space?
You know, they're just as bad. You're walking outdoors to get there.
So that's the issue, is that they don't have any internal connection as well?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Strike?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Boggs. But the mall wasn't in compliance before?
No, no. In the big box ordinance, I mean, none of them were in compliance. It was deemed approved.
But the other end of the mall wasn't in compliance either.
It was deemed approved.
The Oaken Cag?
In 2001.
The Oaken Cag?
It was deemed approved. In 2001, it said, the big box ordinance passed and it said, from now on, you can only move towards compliance. We understand that these buildings are not compliant now. That's what the 10% is for, is to make them more compliant over time. So yeah, that was a problem. When the Oaken Cag was built, it was illegal for it to open into the store. That, I mean, that was the way the liquor laws were back then.
Yeah, but we had the liquor license, liquor store in the university center that did have direct access.
It was built later. And if we try to make a change down there, it would be the same thing. We'd need to change that. We'd have to bring it into conformity. The changes have to be in conformity. The 10% applies to the rest of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Got another question from Mr. Gardner. Go ahead.
I think you maybe already answered the question earlier. I just wanted to confirm my understanding of your viewing, how you're viewing the backsliding. And you mentioned that it's, makes it less safe and convenient for customers or the access isn't as, perhaps effective as it was before. And is your view that that comes from the subsection in the code that just identifies pedestrian access? Is that where, is that how you read?
Section J, yeah.
J, yeah.
Uh-huh. Section J, the Northern Design Standards as well because you're having to walk outside now where you used to be warm and dry. And then also the fact that the public spaces are really not accessible from Nordstrom Rack, although they're counting them towards the public space requirement for Nordstrom Rack. And, you know, I walked there today with the news crew and on the north side of the building, there's broken tequila bottles and all sorts of stuff. So putting extra seating there is not going to be a great place. It's just not a good place to have to walk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs.
I'd request to submit the testimony so that the court's not mad.
Yep, you can deliver it up here. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Come forward, please. And if you want to kind of be ready, if there's others to be ready to testify after, that'd be great.
All right, thank you. My name is Sonya Senkowsky, S-E-N-K-O-W-S-K-Y. And I'm testifying as an individual. I'm a communications consultant and a patient advocate. And for more than 20 years, I've lived and worked within the municipality of Anchorage and shopped at the mall at Sears. I was first introduced to this issue with the Rack more than a year ago through working with some mall merchants. So I think it helped me get a better knowledge of this issue than maybe most residents. So today, I'd like to share some of my personal observations. The last time I was before this commission, in 2016, was for that public hearing that had been ordered by the Superior Court because they decided the public had a right to be heard. I was glad for that. The hearing spanned two meetings, one in June, one in July. You heard from 17 people giving testimony about their concerns regarding pedestrian safety and convenience. You may recall, I showed the video that showed people, young and old, able-bodied, and when using a rocker, all rocking in the roadway between the mall and the Rack. Though you'd already been through a long process, this commission listened patiently. You expressed a clear desire to problem solve. Honestly, I was impressed. You were tough even. After Saratage, Saratage, excuse me, told you their ideas for minor planning improvements like better signs and adding back a sidewalk along the loading dock, you pushed back. I think Commissioner Barker, you said it was like putting relish on a bad hot dog. As commissioners, I heard you express a desire to make things better. You asked good questions. Unfortunately, you got some bad answers. When we came back for the second meeting and you showed interest in an interior solution, you were told that was out of your hands, things like that. We're back again today because the Board of Adjustment ruled that this issue had not gotten a fair hearing. The 2016 resolution was ruled substantively and procedurally deficient. In comments that were recorded in the official transcript of their proceedings, a board member with the Board of Adjustment said it was like, quote, "There was no hearing held at all," following 2014. So I was glad to see that part of the instruction that you got, the better instruction you got from the Board of Adjustment has been repeated and it was also corrected in the staff memo and you've gone over it carefully today. If you do approve a large retail establishment limited site plan that moves away from conformity, the action will be overturned again. I can hear in your questions that you know that. I have this question personally. If the Rack renovation doesn't reduce accessibility, safety and convenience, then why didn't Nordstrom's The Rack choose to open in the other direction where Sears' old entrance used to be? They could have just been facing that way and had no entrance on the other side. And anyone who wanted to get there from the east side could walk through Sears. I think that probably would not have struck them as being a suitable substitute. So finally...
Your time's up. So are there any questions? So are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
You can probably take it down if you need to. There you go. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Travis Noah, N-O-A-H. I'm here representing, I hope you know resources, I'm their peer advocate. I was brought in to evaluate the Nordstrom Rack from a disability standpoint, at least the accessibility aspect of it. And I'm here to tell you, the accessibility of getting to Nordstrom's or to the mall from Nordstrom's is not as easy as it may sound when you consider wheelchairs. For one, the wheelchair access is on the loading dock side. And from a professional as well as personal standpoint, loading dock does not compute when you think handicapped. The reason I say that is there's vans that load from the rear. It's dangerous. You don't know what times of day the loading dock is used. There's no sign there listing that. Not to mention, if you're looking to get into Nordstrom's itself from the main entrance, you still have to go down towards the Sears side and walk back towards Nordstrom's. There is no let-on point from there if you're only going to be parking in the main parking area. My concern with all of this is when you talk disability and you talk elderly, there is no real way for someone to safely get in that building without a concern of falling or tipping over. And I'm not here to speak bad about anybody, but the perception that I see is that it looks like it states that people with disabilities and elderly are not welcome in that store. I'm not going to beat this to death. What was submitted to you are some comments that I made during my evaluation. Those are there for you to look at, and I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify?
I'm Mark Helenthal, and I have a question first.
You use your mic.
This is good.
Yep.
Where's the green light that I want?
We haven't turned it on yet. You said just a second, so here you go.
Where do I see it when it pops?
There it is.
Right there? Okay, thank you. I was hired by...
Your name again, sir?
Mark, M-A-R-C, Helenthal, H-E-L-L-E-N-T-H-A-L.
Great, thank you.
I own Helenthal and Associates. We were hired to do a survey at the mall of Sears, by the mall of Sears. And between the 24th of February and the 4th of March in 2016, we interviewed 400 discreet adults. The interviews were conducted Monday through Sunday between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. We produced a report. The survey measured properties of adults, customers shopping, demographics, behaviors and attitudes towards access to and from the Nordstrom Rack and the mall at Sears. The highlights, if you excuse me as I turn the page, were a very sizable majority, 95.5% of the mall patrons believe Sears' removal of the north side sidewalk made it less safe for people walking between the Nordstrom Rack and the rest of the mall. Second, the mall at Sears patrons' opinion, 96.3%, in the mall of Sears patrons' opinion, new stores only facing the Seward Highway without direct connection are not compatible, direct connection with the Rack, are not compatible with the rest of the mall. Third, an overwhelming 96.3% of the mall at Sears patrons considered stores facing the Seward Highway with no interior connection to the rest of the mall is negatively impacting accessibility and inconvenience. And fourth, the mall patrons, 89.5%, believe the stores that are only faced the Seward Highway should not be able to count the seating areas in the mall as meeting municipal code requirements for a common area where customers and visitors can congregate and relax. In short, the mall at Sears patrons believe a common interior hallway connecting all stores in the mall is needed for their convenience, access, safety and the compatibility of the mall. If you have any questions.
I see no questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I am part of the Mall at Sears marketing team and one of the people who is onsite most, working with tenants and customers, like the ones that you'll see in this video. I can tell you that even two years later, it is a common occurrence to be stopped by people in the hallways or to hear them talking amongst themselves, asking how they can get to the Rack. A lot of times, after explaining to customers that they must walk through Sears, out the front door, down the sidewalk, and the Rack will be on the corner, you're often met with blank stares, confused looks, or shaking heads. I even had one woman yell at me, "Well, if that's not the stupidest thing I ever heard," as she walked off towards Sears. Shoppers were even more vocal with the press coverage that the hearing received last year. There were many online comments from people who just couldn't understand why the mall would allow a store to come in and not have any entrance into the common area. I'd like to read some of these comments now, to convey to you how much of a negative impact it's had on shopper convenience. "I was in the mall last winter for the first time since the Rack went in and was surprised that there wasn't a mall entrance. Isn't that the point of an indoor mall in Alaska? I didn't feel like loading up my kids and either walking outside or driving around to the other entrance, so we just skipped it." Another said, "I want to enter one end of the mall and circle back. I won't bother to exit the mall to walk around to Nordstrom Rack. They should be part of the mall, in my opinion, not just hanging around. Hopefully Nordstrom Rack will listen to its customers, as well as the other merchants." One shopper commented that the landlord should have a clause in the lease that states that you should have an entrance that opens into the mall. "It's a mall, and who wants to walk outside in the winter? Very poor management and shame on Nordstrom's." Another said, "I'm all about walking. I've lived in walkable areas ever since I had the choice of where to live. I lived without a car for most of a decade, but I experienced this recently while visiting the mall. There's no good way to visit both areas while walking, even on a nice day. I did it, but I felt like it was purposefully built so that you shouldn't be doing it." And finally, "I stopped at the Rack once. I spent more time trying to find an entrance than actually shopping there. H&amp;M has two entrances, and I don't see them complaining." It's clear that if nothing else, the site plan for the Nordstrom Rack definitely disrupts shopper convenience and accessibility, forcing them to go outside to reach a mall store. Just because Saratage thinks it's okay to force people to walk around the Rack doesn't mean the shoppers feel the same. To me, it seems like the standards were put in place precisely to avoid things like this from happening, to make sure that people are more important than profits. I ask that you consider this when making your decision regarding this case. I also have additional comments that I didn't have time to read, if I can submit them.
You can bring them up, sure. I can't promise that we'll have time to read them before we deliberate, but thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I don't see any further questions.
Thank you.
Show hands of who else is remaining to testify on this case? All right, great.
Good evening. My name's Bob Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N. I'm the Leasing Director for Denali Commercial, formerly Cargasting Properties. Next month will mark the 50th anniversary of the Mall at Sears. When it opened, it was Anchorage's first enclosed mall, where shoppers could escape the dark winters and come to eat in a bright expansive environment, and it was a hit. Global warming has changed a few things in the past decades, but the weather has not changed that much, and Alaskans still don't appreciate places where they can get out of the weather to shop. You've heard a lot of people, from a lot of people in these hearings, sharing their frustration about how the Commission is being asked to allow Saratage to reconfigure the site in a way that negatively impacts their ability to shop at the stores in the mall. The public doesn't like it. Tenants don't like it. And it appears to me the only ones that support it are the planning department staff and Saratage. And I really don't understand why the department staff is so invested in persuading you to approve this. After reading the transcript from the Board of Adjustment meeting, I really expected to see some changes in this most recent staff report. In that meeting, the Board's Chair went so far as to say that the code is edited in the staff's initial report, such that it gives the wrong direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the section of the code he's referring to has not changed at all. Traffic, foot traffic, traffic, is the lifeblood of a mall. To generate traffic, you need anchors and a convenient way to get between them that goes past the other stores. For years, Sears' declining sales may have had a negative impact on the mall's traffic, and I can see why Saratage was spun off to generate profit by carving up the Sears stores. In other malls, Sears partnered with the developers to do this in a way that worked for the malls, but for some reason, they decided not to bring us into those discussions. If you allow them to turn their side into a strip center by cutting off the space from the rest of the mall, you are really impacting the ability of the rest of the mall to survive. So as I read the code section titled "General Standards for Site Plan Approval," which isn't mentioned in the staff report at all, I don't see how you can say that this proposed site amendment can be considered compatible with the rest of the development. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
My name is Dick Stallone, S-T-A-L-L-O-N-E. I have been in business since 1972. As an owner of a retail store for 45 years, fellow store owners in the Sears Mall, such as myself, are still getting complaints from customers about the Rack not being connected to the rest of the mall. The definition of a mall is when all retail stores are accessible by a common inside pedestrian walkway, allowing for a safe and convenient shopping experience for its customers. Our customers are not happy about the changes that have been done to this site. To them, you basically cut 40,000 square feet of the mall and isolated it from the other retail stores. It's like two separate sites. One of the mall's best-selling points used to be its convenience, but now there's the mall on one side, and if you go outside and walk a block and a half down the road, there's the Nordstrom Rack. This no longer makes it convenient, shopping, especially in our winter climate. But since pedestrian convenience is part of the standards, I don't know how you can call the mall convenient. How could you possibly say there hasn't been backsliding in terms of conformity with the standard? Whether it was intentional or not, I don't know, but I feel like the planning department staff has really steered you away from the real issue here. And that is the issue of conformity and the fact that this mall has moved away from the standards it's supposed to be moving towards. The Board of Adjustment cited my letter in their decision, but I really can't put it in a better, put it any better than fellow board member Dwayne Adams did when they were reviewing this case in their meeting. He quoted that stores cannot have the freedom to conduct an interior remodel with cart launch, to do as they please when it can have a drastic effect on the public safety, circulation, and any of those other standards that require of LREs. The other board members also agreed. That is exactly what this plan has done to the mall. The information that was received before was flawed, and the Board of Adjustment has pointed that out. Now it's the time to make it right. I urge you to turn down and tell Saratage to come back with a plan that is safe and that offers convenience and comfort to the mall shoppers.
Thank you, Mr. Stallone.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you, sir, for your testimony.
My name is Cynthia Henry, and our family business is the Hallmark Store in the Sears Mall. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you and express my concerns about the safe access and elimination of safety hazards as customers move from the Nordstrom Rack to the mall and vice versa. There is no convenient way to move from the Rack to the mall. Customers constantly ask, "How do I get to the Rack?" And they're dismayed and surprised when I tell them that they have to go outside and work their way through traffic to get around the whole building, or to go through Sears. And I've had them come back from Sears and say, "There's no corridor out to the edge of the mall to get outside and enter the Nordstrom Rack." And it's not Sears' job to have a corridor, you know, they're not a concourse for somebody else's store. They are merchandising their store the way they see fit. We're constantly asked about this. I had two ladies just on Saturday asking, and they were in their party shoes, and so they didn't go to the Rack. They said, "I can't do that." But this is a public safety issue, and it's a violation, I think, of all of Anchorage's efforts to promote this city as a livable winter city. Anchorage has led the state in mitigating the negatives of our cold climate by doing everything possible to promote quality of life in this city. I spent eight years on the University of Alaska Board of Regents, and when we were doing facilities planning for the UAA campus, we always talked about the spine. What's the proximity of the spine? Can this facility be connected to that spine? That spine has contributed to the quality of life and the great culture at UAA, because it's a secure place, secure from the weather, but it's a place where there are a lot of windows and students and faculty and staff can meet and talk and walk great distances, which Alaskans like to do, but without being out in the elements. So I would urge you to be consistent with what great leaders of this municipality have done in the past, and to commit to making this 50-year-old facility still a place where people can walk and be out of the elements and enjoy their time and quality of life. So I would ask that you require that there be an indoor corridor between the Nordstrom Rack and the mall. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
My name is Levi Wilson, N-I-L-S-S-O-N. I have been a mall merchant for 20 years. I'm glad that you're visiting this situation, as it continues to be a frustration for shoppers and for the tenants at the mall. The biggest concern, though, is although you're supposed to be starting from scratch, quote-unquote, in reality, Sears went ahead with their plans, even though an appeal was pending, and it's realistic you'd have natural resistance to telling them no or making them change it at this point in the game. We saw this in 2016, and so apparently did the Board of Adjustment. And I think in their meeting transcript, they made several remarks about this situation that sum it up quite well. First, Board Member Dwayne Adams questioned whether, at the 2016 hearing, the Commission was, quote, "Focused on, 'Okay, we've got a proposal here. What have we got to do to make it work? And that's not the test,'" unquote. He added that he'd once had a client in a similar situation, stating, quote, "It cost them a million and a half bucks right off the table. You know, they went with it and they moved on. It's very sad..." It's very sad, but that's the process we have. I feel for Nordstrom, but the public's right. You know, I think Superior Court has laid it out. The public's right is paramount," unquote. Board member Stewart also stated, quote, "that the commission seemed like they were making a decision based on the current status of the construction, so it looked like they were applying that in a manner that showed bias on their part," unquote. And Chair Guccio had his own take on the situation, saying, "The fact that Nordstrom Rack is operating while all these proceedings are still going on is, in fact, pretty unusual. I cannot think of another case where an applicant has simply forged ahead, torpedoes be damned. That's really what has happened here. It's not our concern, you know, let the chips fall where they may," unquote. Sears knew there was a risk when they chose to build, and now they are counting on your resistance to make them change it, but don't let that stop you from doing the right thing." I also wanted to comment on Saratage's concept of putting an elevated walkway to try and mitigate the obstruction that the new loading dock in particular presents. The old system had a continuous walkway between the front and the back sides of that mall. There was no, as far as I know, obstruction at all. If they were to put in an elevated walkway or a walkway with a corrugated concrete surface, that would further endanger the public. A raised walkway would make it so that people with walkers or wheelchairs might actually fall off and tip over in the middle of the road. That is not a solution. That is a further condemnation of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Before I start, the packet that you had had a very serious omission, Robert Mintz of Cargotstein Properties hand-delivered a letter on October 23rd that's not in your package, and it's very informative, and I'd like to present it.
I don't think we're going to all read it right now, but go ahead, sir.
My name is Jim Gottstein, G.O.T.T.S.T.E.I.N. I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of Cargotstein Properties Anchorage Shopping Center. The first thing I want to say is that, and I really want to go through the legal standards here, I think that will be helpful. Under AMC 2150-200, if the proposed modifications do not comply with the standards, it cannot be approved. It cannot be approved. In other words, it must be denied. And that's exactly what the Board of Adjustment decided to be one of its decisions. The renovation remodel project is required to maintain conformity with code and as provided in the other provisions. The board also decided that, see, well, which the staff finally acknowledged, that the flexible framework does not allow moving further from compliance, in other words, the backsliding. And what I'm going to say is that there's clearly movement away from conformity, and for that reason, the application must be denied. 2150-320J pedestrian access, they finally put in this sentence that said there had to be sidewalks along the whole side of the building, and then just this evening, they came up with this idea that now there's no parking adjoining because they stuck the loading dock in between, but there's parking right on the other side. I think that's adjoining. But also, 320J provides, the establishment shall provide sufficient accessibility, safety, and convenience to pedestrians, customers, and employees. And you've heard all kinds of testimony. I don't think there's any dispute, as a factual matter, that that is not being complied with. And in fact, this commission, when it first saw this plan, identified these problems, and then was told by staff that it couldn't consider that, which has then been held to be erroneous. So this is fatal. This is fatal. And also, the community spaces is fatal. The appropriate interior and exterior public areas shall be provided. And the idea that they're going to put in that the space in the mall that's no longer connected can be carried is ludicrous, and the idea that they're going to put outside spaces as compliant is also ridiculous, and certainly that this modification moves it away from compliance, and for that reason, it's fatal, and the application must be denied.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Chair, I apologize. I had a question. I don't know.
I missed Mr. Gardner in the queue. Go ahead, Mr. Gardner.
I had a question about the standards, and it may be a little unfair to put you on the spot, and I'm asking because it seems like you have some familiarity with the code here, but I'm just looking at the cover, the first page of the letter here that you provided, and you cite AMC 21.50.200, and I think in some other documents I had seen that provision had been identified as well. And I'm wondering how it is that that is a section that we should be looking at. When I look at 2155.130, I only see it referring to 21.50.320, which is, I think, how the staff recommendations had been written up by referencing those two provisions. And I'm just not sure how 200 comes into this, in your view.
Well, the standard is generally applicable, so it applies to all applications.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll ask staff to weigh in on that. Could you please? I mean, we don't walk through the general applicability standards in our staff packet, so I wonder if that was an interpretation that they are not applicable or that they are, and it's just an omission in the packet.
Mr. Chair, as was noted by Commissioner Gardner, it, you know, it just refers to 2155.5320, and that's what we addressed. It appears 215200 is just general standards for site plan approval, but yeah, we don't address that.
So that's my question. What we're hoping is that we can weigh in definitively on whether those general standards... I mean, we didn't address them. We still have time to address them, maybe not here this evening, but we're looking to know whether they ought to be addressed, like has been testified.
If I may, the Board of Adjustment decision says that you have to comply with that.
We didn't refer to 215200. The staff didn't refer to it because 2155.130 says you're already looking at an approved site plan. Does that make sense?
It doesn't to me. I just want to make sure that that's what we believe, that we don't have to further go back and find and look at the general standards in this process.
That's correct.
Jeff, I may say that's ridiculous. I mean, really. The code says you can't approve a site plan unless it complies with the conditions, and the fact that this is a modification doesn't change that. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Anyone else wishing to testify this evening? Last chance, or you'll have to testify in accessory dwelling units. Hearing none. I would invite the petitioner's representative back up for rebuttal. I believe you had four minutes and 20 seconds.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification before we start rebuttal, this is a complicated case with a lot of complicated issues that have been asked back and forth and commented on. I couldn't help note that, from a procedure standpoint, there seem to be an awful lot of representatives of Cargotstein Properties testifying tonight, rather than for their own interests as an independent citizen, but for Cargotstein, which traditionally in the past has been frowned upon, in fact, not allowed. So I'm trying to figure out from a condition of fairness, what kind of time, since I only have four minutes and 20 seconds left, do I... I mean, is that all we have? It's difficult to cover a lot of these issues, anyway.
Yeah, and nor did I see anyone jump in here. If I missed it, I did not recognize that we were getting more than one comment from an individual company. But you have four minutes and 20 seconds remaining. My recommendation, when time is short, is to cover the high notes and rely upon questions to, you know, to sort of further that time, as commissioners have questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start now. First off, just a couple of comments, just for clarity's sake. We did have an approved plan when the construction permit was issued. Secondly, nothing in Section J requires retail spaces to be interconnected on an internal mall, and I'd like you to consider that. I also believe when you read Section J, that when it says that there shall be a walkway the full length of the building, it gives you a compliant alternative, and that's that you have a walkway that is adjacent to any parking area. And traditionally, when you look at landscaping requirements or other things, driveways and parking spaces, the driveways are part of the parking area and are called a pertinent drive. As far as ADA accessibility, it's interesting that the parking spaces that were referenced here earlier were parking spaces that were there previously. They were just upgraded to meet current ADA standards because the previous ramps that were there did not meet code. And I went out again and looked at Google Earth Drive By, just to make sure that we did have photos, and we also had survey-related photos to show that. When Mark Helenthal, who I have a lot of respect for, got up and talked about the statistics that came out of the survey, I would like to request a formal copy of it and all the data, so that we can actually see, because I didn't see any reference to the questions that were asked, how they were asked, what conditions it was done in. And then, you know, it's interesting to go through this, that, you know, I indicated earlier that this is a property that's in transition. And if you remember back to the hearing that we had last time, one of the representatives from Saratage was here and indicated that any future development associated with the rest of the Sears space or that area would be connected through to the mall. And I'd like to hand out to you tonight, albeit a conceptual layout, it's probably relative true in form and fashion as to what the future of the mall and the Sears area will be. Stop the timer.
Okay. Thanks.
And I think you'll see that the commitment is there, that with redevelopment of that portion of the project, there will be a variety of spaces, variety of sizes, and the mall through corridor will continue based on the structure and the column locations of the Sears building and space, all the way to the east side of the property. That project will obviously have to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing, so that everyone can come and testify. But clearly, in a transitional mode of this property from 50 years ago to today, it will, I believe, make a huge difference, and maybe we can even dress up the Benson side of the building, which looks pretty tough and has for a long time. So in closing, as far as the rebuttal goes, and I think it's also very important for the commission to know, and I'll go ahead and pass our copies, that the walkway that's been so discussed, and it seems like the testimony is some of the same testimony that we heard at the last meeting, when we brought forward the revised routing, and that that walkway would have been in place and operational a year and a half ago if it weren't for the basis of this document.
Okay. I've now been handed so many things here. Here we go. I'm going to have to get organized here currently. Go ahead.
And I pass that out, just so that the commission can know, that there's, beyond compliance or conformity with the large retail establishment goals and community standards and trying to bring everything forward, we are not backsliding. We had to put in a loading dock to make a leasable area feasible to do. We've come back in and shown you how it could be done and be done safely and meet the requirements. Doesn't say it has to be inside of the mall. It doesn't say it has to be covered. Those are considerations, but we do have a safe walkway, reviewed with a traffic engineer, and that injunction is what has kept that from occurring.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Potter. There's at least one question. I'm sure there'll be a couple. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I guess I missed that. So what would trigger this conceptual plan implementation?
My name's James Brey, B-R-Y. I'm Executive Vice President of Development and Construction for Saratage Growth Properties. We're actively marketing that plan that's been handed to you, and subject to signing leases with tenants and coming back in, filing for an application, site plan approval, as well as building permits, that plan would get implemented. At last hearing back in July of last year, I committed to effectively that plan.
If I continue, I don't want to obtain any proprietary information, but how does Sears fit into this plan?
We've always had a contractual right with Sears to recapture 100% of this store. It's one of 21 locations that we had bought from... We bought 266 Sears and Kmart stores, most of which are to downsize them. This store was one of 21 that we had a right to recapture the entire store. There are actually spaces in there that Sears may retain and have a smaller footprint.
You good with that, John? And our goal here is not to judge this site plan, but I can't help but notice that these proposed spaces have internal and external access. Was there something specific to the Nordstrom Rack that precluded that?
Yes. When Sears negotiated the lease with Nordstrom Rack, they were specifically asked if Nordstrom Rack would have two entrances, and Nordstrom Rack definitively replied that they would not have taken the space if they were required to.
Great. Any other questions for the petitioner's representative or petitioner? Mr. Gardner?
I don't know how relevant this is at this point, but there was, I think, someone who testified earlier surmised that Nordstrom Rack would not have been interested in a single entrance, that it was just to the interior of the mall. I don't know if there was any discussion about that with Nordstrom Rack, or if you have any comments on that.
It's not their business model. So even though it was testified that they have stores that do have multiple entrances and sometimes on a mall, that's not the commonplace. That's a lower percentage of their stores, and all of their stores have exterior entrances. and all of their stores have exterior entrances.
I'm gonna call a quick recess. I'm not gonna close the public hearing, so you may come back, I may ask you to come back to the podium after a five-minute break, but we've been going for a little while, I think we need a quick break. So five-minute recess, thanks.
Thank you, commissioners.
It was a little longer than five minutes. Public hearing is still open. Jared, are you in the queue, or is that from before?
No.
From before, okay. What's the wish of the body at this point? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I want to move to postpone this case to a date, future date unspecified, in order to receive updated site plans showing the proposed improvements that would meet the 10% requirement that is in the code.
Is there a second to that motion? Second to my, Mr. Spinelli, go ahead, speak to your motion.
Yeah, I, I've been on this commission for a while, and we've gone through several different site plan reviews, major site plan reviews, and all the site plan reviews that we've reviewed have included a site plan showing the improvements. And with a list of the cost estimate and whether or not it meets the 10% requirement, et cetera. So I'm really reluctant, I think, to make, set a precedent which would allow this to be done without the site plan and without showing the improvements that are to be made to be in conformance. And I think we have some ideas probably that we would like to, you know, pitch maybe as a part of it, and I think, I'm really reluctant just to kick it into the administrative sphere and not really have the public have a chance to look at it, right? I mean, that's what's gonna happen if we say, yeah, we approve it, and yeah, go ahead and take it and negotiate the improvements. And that's probably not a good idea since there's a lot of public interest in this particular site plan. It should be done in the open, I think, and so everybody has a chance to look at it. I think the public hearing probably should be continued, just because there's gonna be a substantial amount of new information, and I think the public might want to comment on that too, so. That's my.
Mr. Spinelli, care to speak to that?
Yeah, I second the motion. I think that it would be helpful to see the clear picture of everything that we plan to approve.
Ask a petitioner to come to the mic. And this is gonna be a question, I think, back to Mr. Spring as well. I think, here's our issue. We first had a memo in this case in 2009, clearly cases previously. Postponing indefinitely what, I mean, Nordstrom Rack is operating a business right now, was their motivation to come back? So, so what you're suggesting, I think, by this, this, this motion is that we can't act on a site plan that isn't a site plan, right?
Yes.
I mean, there are aspects of it that we could act on related to pedestrian connections or non-connections or whatever, but we don't have the full site plan in front of us with it to review, so I think that, is that right?
Yes, and the site plan is very relevant to the, whether or not it meets the standards or not, or whether it makes, moves towards conformity.
That you can't make that determination unless you see it?
I don't think so.
So the question is, when, Mr. Potter, would you be willing to bring a site plan forward with your proposals, the 10%?
With guidance from you today, if you could identify those items that you believe may be things to consider, we would be able to have a fully delved-out site plan addressing those things with accounted cost estimates so that you could see how it is. We'd put our package together, submit it, and be totally transparent as far as the different options, what the costs were, why we picked what we did to bring forward. And then that way, you could then have the staff review it and get their comments and come back to the Planning Commission.
You'd bring that back in 30 days if we gave, if we gave some, some guidance on what those things would be?
If you could prioritize for us which the commission feels are more important to you.
Okay.
Then we, then we would go back and work with construction, work with the designers, come up with different options and price them, and take about 30 days to resubmit to the staff.
Go ahead, Mr. Spring, and if you want to start.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
No, sir, you can't right now. You might have another chance during public hearing, but if we were to continue the public hearing.
How to deal with this, the plan should be denied, and then they come back with a conforming plan.
Sir, I appreciate your comments, but we're gonna deal with it the way we think we can deal with it here this evening. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I, Mr. Potter, I think you had some good ideas that you mentioned in your presentation. Those are all new to me, so I haven't really had time to think about them too much. And also, there's a factor, the cost factor. I don't know which of these ideas that I might have might fit, you know, within the cost constraints, but, so with that said, I am interested, as I said before, about the landscaping and what could be done with that, and to me, that's the highest priority for the site conformity, moving towards conformity.
Anybody else wish to comment? Well, I, I would actually like more comments on this that you handed out tonight, and, and we weren't gonna ask for it, but I will tell you, I've personally walked the merry-go-round and also struggled with the issue of going through a different business to access another business. I think it's problematic. But you threw it on the table, and to me, it's the best solution I've seen yet to connect this, this, this issue from a pedestrian standpoint. And is that, is that a, would you, and that's gonna be up to you, whether you, you propose that as part of this site plan, or that's just some future kind of teaser. But to me, in addition to seeing the 10%, we still haven't deliberated on whether or not, you know, we, we, you meet the, the actual code, right, which is still part, part of that, second part of that conversation that we need to have. So what this is talking about is the 10% moving into conformity, and the other one has to do with, have we addressed all these other things related to the, to the, to the proposed site plan?
Sure, as, as we've indicated, within 30 days, we will put together a package that will be submitted to the city. As far as the optional plan, that is the thinking in the direction. James put on the record at the last meeting a commitment that with any revisitation of that portion of the Sears retail area, that there would be a continuation of that mall space through to the east face of the building with an entry on that side. That would be enhanced. So the first item is, we'll get you this for the Nordstrom Rack and the three, one to three commercial areas on the west face of that part of the building, and the loading dock area, and look at different ways to reach that, transparently show you what the costs are, bring forward what our recommendation is, and review with the staff. That plan, it's being worked on. There's been conceptual work done on building elevations and a variety of things. It's becoming more real by the day, but I don't have a timeframe, and I don't know if James can put forward something either, but we can tell you that we know that whatever we want to do there has to come back to the Planning Commission through a public hearing process.
And I appreciate that, both of you. I just, obviously, it would be a very large project and a very difficult economy. I get that. At the same time, you've acknowledged addressing the issues that have come up here tonight with a future site plan, so we still want to know how we're gonna deal with the current one, right? That's kind of where we're at.
Yep.
So we've got a motion to postpone indefinitely. Any other comments from commissioners? Please vote on the motion. Case is postponed. That means the case will be, if I'm, if I understand this correctly, because the public hearing is still open, it'll be noticed appropriately as a public hearing, correct, for, for when it, when it comes back?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Thank you, everyone. It's a complicated case. We appreciate your time with us here this evening. We're gonna move on to the next one. Which is case 201795, ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code essentially to allow for accessory, or amending accessory dwelling unit provisions of the code. It's been previously postponed here this evening. Could we have a staff report to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Live, Work, Play Housing Area Focus of the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation was tasked with identifying opportunities to augment housing development in support of workforce development in Anchorage. A subcommittee of the Live, Work, Play Housing Area Focus met regularly to work, research, and ultimately propose this accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The subcommittee was broadly represented and included MOA staff, local developers, and members of the Live, Work, Play Housing. This text amendment includes modifications to two chapters of Title 21, Chapter 5 and Chapter 6. These modifications are intended to expand the supply of residential rental units, make homeownership easier to attain and sustain, and to, and to encourage the development of this type of alternative housing. It will allow for more efficient use of residential property, development that is compatible with existing neighborhoods, and will create more affordable housing alternatives. While this ordinance provides increased flexibility, it does not change the underlying zoning district allowances for density. The recently adopted 2040 Land Use Plan identifies a need for up to 21,000 additional residential units and a more diverse housing supply with greater number of compact housing, of which accessory dwelling units is. The 2040 Land Use Plan targets an additional 1,000 new accessory dwelling units in the Anchorage Bowl by the year 2040. The Anchorage Bowl currently receives, on average, 20 applications for new accessory dwelling units annually. To meet the goal of the 2040 Land Use Plan, that average would have to double. The ordinance proposes five primary changes. The first allows the detached accessory dwelling units in the R1 and R1A zoning districts. Number two, it allows for increasing the maximum size of accessory dwelling units. Number three, it provides a provision to, in some cases, allow parking to be provided on-street. Number four, it reduces setbacks for detached accessory dwelling units. And number five, it increases the maximum height of accessory, of accessory structures in the R1 and R1A zoning districts to 25 feet. With that being said, staff would like to recommend approval of the ordinance, of the ordinance modifying Chapters 5 and 6 with the recommended changes located on Pages 2 and 3 of the staff packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Questions for staff before we go to the public hearing? Anybody? Okay, there will be time later as it comes up. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward, please say your name, help us with the spelling for the record, and if you're a member of a group, five minutes, individual, three minutes. Sabotage? What's going on here? Well, how's that make you feel, Kathy? He didn't want to, he didn't want to tape, record you. Did you see that?
Yeah, for sure. Okay, members, Chair and members of the commission, my name is Kathy with a C, Gleason, G-L-E-A-S-O-N. I'm currently acting president of Turnigan Community Council, and in your packet, you should have received a comment letter that our council submitted back in October. We didn't take a formal position on any of the proposed amendments to the accessory dwelling units code ordinance changes, but we did have some concerns that we wanted to express, and, and we hope that perhaps by taking those concerns into consideration, you can make some modifications to what planning staff just proposed to you in, in terms of code I was looking at the packet and saw that the, the commission received some comments from the senior planner, Tom Davis, and I think they're really good, and I would, I would encourage you to take into consideration comments and proposals that they submitted, because a lot of what they, what Tom submitted would address concerns that Turnigan Community Council, I think, would, that have, we have. Specifically, on page 21 of at least the public packet, they, Tom addresses compatibility, and I think that's really important, because neighborhood compatibility is certainly a requirement for accessory dwelling units in code. You want to protect neighborhoods, property values, so forth, and that's a big concern about what we have with regard to R1 in Turnigan. And because it's an older community, you've got narrow streets, you've got, for example, on Turnigan Parkway, you're only allowed to park on one side of the street, there's no sidewalks when it snows, so it gets pushed, that street essentially becomes a one-lane. Now, if you take, in any given block, if you take a number of houses that take advantage of this accessory dwelling unit proposal and, and put those on their property and have on-street parking, it could be problematic. So I think the neighborhood compatibility should be your base that you, when you judge each one of these modifications to, and see where it falls. Also, on page 23 of at least the public packet of amendments is on paragraph, well, these aren't numbered, but about halfway down, it says, "Moderating the degree of change is a constructive way that allows the ADU housing and responds to neighborhood residents' concerns. Limitations on detached ADUs and their size exist for the reason to ensure that ADU development is compatible with the intended scale and character of single-family neighborhoods in the R1 and R1A districts." I think that's something you should take into consideration. Going from 35% to, what is it, 75%, I believe, as far as size, on these ADUs, on R1 and R2s, is a huge jump, and I think moderation is in order for that kind of an increase. Also, they, this packet on page, the public packet on page 28, provides options to moderate increases in size and height of detached DU, ADUs. And I think, again, this goes a long way to address some of Turnigan Community Council's concerns. So if you have, oh, and also, I noticed that the planning, the traffic department submitted a proposed amendment, and I hope that you consider that one as well. They recommended the following, "Consider adding additional wording to 21.005.07OD.1.v." Consider adding additional wording to 21.005.07OD.1.V.I.I.C.8 quote, "Street shall be of adequate design to support on-street parking and improvements to site that meet requirements specified in the code." And I think that's where you can get some, you know, onsite realistic reality check of whether at any given street, that would allow for an ADU and on-street parking. And lastly, Ternigan Community Council would like to see public notice and an opportunity to comment, both to those adjacent to where any ADU is proposed under new code that increases size and height and so forth, so that the public is aware of what's going on, and it require notice to the community council as well, so that we know what's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Any questions for Ms. Gleason?
My question, try to summarize for me the comments that you had about compatibility, what you're saying as it relates to the code as it's proposed.
Well, I think that if you've got, I'm thinking of Ternigan, an older established neighborhood, north of Northern Lights, where you've got mostly a lot of single-family. And if a property owner decides to build an accessory dwelling unit to the scale that these new proposals would allow, is that compatible with an R1-zoned neighborhood? You're essentially turning R1 zoning into R2. And for smaller existing code ADUs, I think that that's probably appropriate, and it wouldn't have that much incompatibility. But at the scale that these are being proposed, the changes, the size, the height, the percentage of the existing dwelling unit on the lot, you're going to create an incompatible dynamic within that neighborhood, especially if more than one home on any given block decides to take advantage of these new codes.
Yeah. My question is, are you suggesting that there's a compatibility criteria for each proposal, or that there's some analysis that deems certain neighborhoods not compatible to allow accessory dwelling units?
I think it has to be determined on a case-by-case basis. I really do.
Who decides compatibility?
And I would ask Tom Davis, because I was referring to his comments, and he's stressing the compatibility issue, so he could probably address this much better than I could.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. I will go to Tom. Tom, your comments on compatibility there, what were you driving at?
The comments on compatibility in Page 5 of our comments, and I'm sorry, I don't have the packet to give me the right page number that you might be looking at, but as far as I recall, what the public was quoting there, that was on Page 5 of our memo, it's mostly related to compatibility in general, and wasn't proposing a specific review process per, oh, thank you.
Okay. So, you weren't, weren't, you guys?
It was a lead-in to more specific items that the division reviewed, and a lead-in to more specific suggestions, options for amending the draft ordinance.
Great, thanks.
Could I just add to that? Sorry.
Very briefly.
On Page 3 of Tom's letter as well, on Page 21 of public packet, does, under Action 4-7, it's amend Title 21 to ease restrictions that currently deter construction of accessory dwelling units, determine appropriate measures through a meaningful collaborative public process, and include development standards for neighborhood compatibility. So, it is integral to any of the changes that you may want to make, especially in the R1, R2 zoning districts.
Mr. Spring, you got a question?
Yeah, Kathy. What are you proposing for a notification? Is it just to give notice to the neighbors? Is there a public hearing? Is there some?
Well, I think that would be up to you to decide the extent of where you want to go. Ternigan Community Council was thinking that notification at minimum to the adjoining property owners, wherever an ADU is proposed, in a zoning R1 and R2 districts, and then also notification to the community council. And we didn't discuss this per se. It's an idea that I had later on, after we submitted our comments. But perhaps the way to kind of accommodate this without going too far in one direction or the other, is to require a conditional use permit for any ADU that would go above and beyond what's existing in code, standards existing in code. So, if it's 35% of the size of the original dwelling, that's in code now, so if you're going to want to have an ADU, you're going to have to submit a conditional use permit. But if you're going to go up to 75%, as the proposal is, and you approve that, much of a jump, then require a conditional use permit. And of course, by doing that, that would automatically kick in that public notice It's an idea. Maybe you can maybe come up with something that might make sense, too, but that's one idea on how to kind of accommodate our concern about property value impacts, on-street parking impacts, emergency vehicle access on narrow streets, where parking's allowed only on one street, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason.
Thank you.
I don't see Francis McLaughlin over there. I assume that's, is that Tom? Are you from, were you on, is that you? Are you in the queue?
Yes.
Could you, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. That Action 4-7 that Kathy Gleason referred to, in stating, "Determine appropriate measures through a meaningful collaborative public process," I just want to make sure, clarify that that was intended to be during the development of standards, during the development of standards, whether through the amendment or for a neighborhood overall, but it wasn't intended to apply to individual developments. They're on Page 3 of the staff memo. Thanks.
Isn't that what we're doing here tonight, though? I mean, aren't we putting standards together? Are you suggesting some other process?
No, that's, yes, that's what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah, okay. But not a case, not an individual-by-individual?
ADU-by-ADU, no.
Okay, thank you. Next, to testify, please. Come on forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, my name is David Evans, E-V-A-N-S. And my wife and I live in Rogers Park Community Council in an R1 zone, and we're totally opposed to expanding the number of ADUs in R1 zones for all of the reasons that the Ternigan Community Council memo states. And just to put a personal touch on it, this is a picture of my backyard that I'm going to give to you later. But if all three property owners put ADUs on top of their garages along the alley like they could, this is what it would look like, and just, I'd like you to keep this in mind when you're deliberating on this. And I know that you can't just ignore this ordinance, because the 2040 Land Use Plan requires you to develop some ordinances in. I guess I'm going to ask you to send this back to the planning department, so that we can have a meaningful collaborative public process. That hasn't happened yet, as far as I know, and that is required by the 2040 Land Use Plan Action Items Checklist on Page 82 of that plan. And the reason I say that, from my perspective, we haven't had a meaningful collaborative public process, is because I'm a member of the community, sorry, the Rogers Park Community Council, and not the board, but just as a resident. And my wife has been on the board. She served for seven years. We are on their mailing list. I attend every meeting, and I'm also on Nextdoor. And the first time that I heard about this was at last month's meeting, which was coincident with the meeting that you guys were going to have to hear it. And there's been no public meetings, as far as I know, and it seems to me, for something that affects this many people in R1 units, or R1 zoning, there should have been public meetings. The planning staff should have come to the community councils at least once, if not more times, and we haven't heard from them at all. It came up last month's Rogers Park Community Council meeting, just because a resident brought it up. That doesn't sound like a meaningful collaborative public process to me. If you decide that you do need to take action on this tonight, I would ask you to adopt the planning staff's options to moderate increases in size to the height of detached ADUs, and that's on Page 28 of your packet. And I'd like you to adopt Options 4, 5B, 6, and 7. And I'd also ask you to revise Option 6, so that only single-story ADUs are allowed on R1 lots. They're so narrow, narrow side yards, it just does not make sense to have two-level ADUs on top of garages in areas that are less than 10,000 square feet. And that in other areas, ADUs in height should be less than the height of the principal residence. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
My name is Clay Porter, C-L-A-I, Porter, P-R-T-E-R, and I have a handout, so. I'm an architect and a contractor and a developer, and been building in this city since 1972. And from what I've seen, and what I've done, and what I've experienced in this community, is that we have a very strong, we have a wicked housing shortage. We can't build affordable housing. We can't get permits out of the city. We don't seem to be able to develop. And the business that I have at the present time, and I do 20 or 30 additions a year, one year many years ago, I built 300 houses, but that was back in 1975. But we don't have a methodology in R1. We have the ADU, but in R1 and R1A, trying to put together an attached ADU doesn't always work with the character of the house, the site plans that you have, be it a large or a small lot. We want, people want to have structures close for their family, whether you have an extended family, or you have family that wants to move to be part, or you want to take care of them. There are all kinds of reasons to include these projects, to have this available to you to use in R1 and R1A. You can do detached in the other zoning areas, and that works fine, but there are, you know, we have a problem. I know in the projects that I've done downtown, I get requests all the time to want to do a detached project in R1, R1A, and I tell them, "We can't." And they say, "Well, I can build over the garage." "Well, that's too high." Well, there are lots of different ways to do. Flexibility is crucial to us. The design standards are crucial. We're increasing the square footage from only 700 to 900. I know the ratio of 75%, but that's a percentage of a standard square, of a square footage. And the handout I gave you talks generally to those things. Some people wish to use these as income generators for them. That's a possibility, but I don't see that as much of a demand in that as I see for people do that. I know in my own family, it would have been right for my son to be able to have that before he could buy enough, have enough income to buy a structure for himself. So, I'm very much in favor of the changes that have been proposed by the planning department. From a business point of view, I get asked more times than I can remember about whether we can or can't do it. I presently am working on three projects, but they're all in R5, or R3, or R3 and R4 zones, and the detached is not an issue. So, I'm strongly in favor, and would urge you to be in favor. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Porter, you raise a question for me, and this is as much for staff, I think. What is an ADU in a multi-family zoning district?
If you, that's a good question, and it can be a real fuzzy answer. If indeed you have a single-family dwelling, you can modify it to be a duplex, but generally, a multiplex unit, but generally, they are, to me, an attached structure. If you're doing a detached accessory dwelling unit, then you're adhering to the standards that are set by those requirements, as such. And generally, the ADU is detached, so that you can have some separation of families and separation of uses for those. And so, to me, in R3, with the particular one that we just started working on, and in R5, she has a house, it's a two-and-a-half-story house. She wishes to have the front half for her family, and she wishes, when she stops being a schoolteacher, to move in about a 600-square-foot unit on the back of this lot, with a slightly larger single-family garage. And so, that's her goal, but she doesn't wish to be attached to the structure. Well, in her case, the present rules allow for that.
So, it allows the detached, it already allows it.
It already allows it.
What does this do, what does this do in the R3 zoning district that you can't already do?
Nothing.
You don't think so?
No, no. I think it's the R1, R1A that I see, that that's the more important thing, as far as I can see at this point. The square footage changes, I think, are excellent. I think, you know, the parking and the compatibility of design, or harmony of design, whatever you want to use, you can't just stick, you know, a 25-foot-square, 10-foot-square building and call it an ADU and have it be complementary to the structure. You've got to solve the design problems, or you should solve the design problem.
My concern, if you will, and we heard testimony previously on R1, and that's a different matter, I think, at least that's been the testimony here this evening. If you have an R3, and you can already do this, but now there's a definition that defines ADU differently, does this mean now that you have to have an owner reside on one of the units, because that's a requirement of an ADU, as opposed to building a duplex or triplex or whatever in that zoning district? Now, if it falls under ADU, have you required ownership of one of the units?
Through the chair, through the commission, the requirement for owner occupancy is not proposed to be changed with this ordinance. So, effectively, there's a requirement existing in code today. We're not proposing to change that with this ordinance.
So, how do you, what, if you can today build a structure, and a detached structure on an R3 lot, I'm presuming you can, because I've done it, otherwise I got through, and I shouldn't have, but aside from that, what now, what does this, why do we need, I'm just, I mean, is this really about R1, or is this, because you can already do it on R2, R3, R4 anyway? Do we need the standard in the multi-family zoning districts? And just for clarity's sake, we just kind of not call it ADUs?
Through the chair, to the commission, I think the major change for our multi-family districts is the size. That's what this ordinance does, is it increases the size. Now, specific to the R1, R1A districts, it allows for detached accessory dwelling units. So, I understand where Mr. Porter's coming from. His concern really is the single-family residential districts. But it does change the multi-family districts as well, being as though it increases the maximum size from 700 square feet to the proposed 900 square feet. So, it does have an impact on those districts as well.
But are you, what you're building in the R3, is it as an accessory dwelling? Are you coming in under the accessory dwelling unit code when you do that today? Or are you just building multi-family on a multi-family?
Just building multi-family, and this would affect the square footage size of that. In the one particular case, they haven't decided which way they wish to go at this point.
Gotcha, okay.
We're doing the design process for that.
I got you.
Through the chair, to the commission, the intent behind this ordinance is not to increase density. And in other words, if you can already build multi-family in the R3, this is not a workaround to getting an additional unit. That's not the intent.
And from my understanding, I would agree with, that's how I would interpret it.
Oh, that makes sense. Mr. Spinelli?
For Mr. Porter or staff, isn't there regulation and title, or when you're building in R2 and R3s, that duplexes need to be a principal, one principal structure? I don't believe detached duplexes are allowed. Are they?
Through the chair, Mr. Spinelli, you're correct.
Yeah. Is it, that's just R2. R3, you're allowed to have multiple principal structures in R3, I think.
I think that would entail a multiple, like a, you go through the site condo ordinance in order to get there.
While we're going through testimony, could one of you just please dig into whether or not you can build multiple structures on a lot in a R2, R3, R4, that, again- or not you can build multiple structures on a lot in a R2, R3, R4, that, again, because I've done it, so I don't know how I got through.
Multiple principal structures. So I, you know, I think it's important to point out that accessory dwelling units, the structure itself is considered accessory, not principal. So keep that in mind.
But if I can already build two principal structures, I don't really need an accessory structure. That's really my question, is whether, and I just, I don't have the code in front of me, if someone could kind of just double-check that. I just want to make sure we're not creating a redundancy that's really not needed. But, Mr. Porter, I appreciate your testimony here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify, come on forward.
Hello, my name's Anna Saylor, S-A-Y-L-O-R, and I just want to put a face to this issue. I was born and raised in Alaska, and I currently live in the South Edition. I'm a member of the South Edition Community Council. And right now, I'm living in my parents' basement, and I love it, and I love my neighborhood. I'm teaching garden classes in the yard. I do have a job, and we made a raspberry patch, and I want to live in a more sustainable way. I think there are a lot of people like me, and I think we're very good neighbors, that we want to create a community that is more intentional, that we're living in a way that is being mindful of resources, that is creating an energy-efficient home, and we're going to be part of our communities. I didn't buy a car until I was 30. I walked, and that was, that was a philosophical choice that I made. And I think that, I know that that's a, that's a concern of people having too many cars, and I think that there are other people like me as well, who want to try to live in a more sustainable way, so maybe have a family, just a one-car family, or a walk-in family, which is possible in the South Edition. So, I also, another issue is changing times. When my parents bought that house, it was $154,000, and it is now worth $475,000. And they haven't done anything to it, really, and have taken care of it. There's a different little tiny porch on the front, has a beautiful garden now. So that's not something, even though I have a really wonderful education, and I have a great job, I can't, that's not something that's accessible to me. But I want to stay living in my home community. And I think having neighborhoods that are economically diverse is better for everybody. There's like less crime, and I want to be, I want to be one of those people. And I also want to take care of my parents as they get older. And they're 70 right now, and they're doing pretty good, but people who stay in their residence live longer and are healthier. And even if I didn't end up staying in this small house forever, then somebody's, a caretaker could live there and take care of them. But I also think the idea of intergenerational living is really wonderful, too. And in order for this to be sustainable for me, like, I need to have some of my own space. And one of the biggest things that I appreciate about those suggested changes is the above-garage issue. So I want to build a small place against an alley, and I don't want to live above a garage. It's like my dad feng shui, my dad would be in an alley at dawn, working on tools, and I need to have like my own little castle. And I think the way that people are getting around these issues is by building these big garages, and then there's the thing on top of, you know, and it's not cute. And I think we want to maintain that cuteness, and we want to maintain that community.
I got it. Someone in the queue, go ahead, Mr. Strike, got a question for you.
I have to applaud your enthusiasm there. Appreciate that. But just to go get it straight, you want to move out of the basement into the backyard?
Yeah.
So the basement will be for lease now?
No, it's, I have, there's like a concrete ledge that goes around the side of the basement, and I have a little spot down there. It's very cozy, actually.
How big, how big of a yard? How big of a lot?
It's a 7,000-square-foot lot.
Okay, so it's conducive to the little home?
Yes, yes, and I'd be able to continue gardening, and I've been teaching garden classes, and one of my neighbors is taking one of, taking the class, and I have a neighborhood discount, like, to improve the quality of life.
Can I, I think you were just about to get to it. Are you suggesting that this ordinance should not allow units above garages?
I think what I understood is that it was, I was thinking that the only way that I was going to be able to do this is if I had it above a garage.
No.
Which is not what I want.
No, there's, you can put it above a garage, but you could have...
Through the chair, to the commission, yes, the answer is you could do it above a garage, or it can be a standalone ADU.
Could you technically have a home, a garage, and an accessory dwelling unit?
Correct.
So you could technically have three structures?
Yes.
Is it true that at this time?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is it true that at this time, you can't have, I don't think I can have a detached one unless I build it over a garage?
In the R, I don't know what zoning district you current...
R2D2, R2D.
R2D?
Yes.
You could have a detached ADU in the R2D district?
Currently.
Currently, yes. When you consider you have a principal structure, you've got a garage, and you've got a detached ADU, you also need to consider the fact that you cannot exceed the maximum lot coverage allowed for that zoning district. So that's another point to bring up.
So what does she get today that she does, what does she get with this ordinance? So she doesn't need this ordinance to do what she wants to do?
Well, if she, if she wants to build an additional 200 square feet, then she needs this ordinance, yeah. So she could build a detached ADU at 700 square feet. With this ordinance, she could build a detached ADU at 900 square feet.
So you're ready to move out of the basement?
I'm ready, and I want to open this spring. So I would really encourage you guys to move along, so that I can start opening this thing.
You're going to move us along, so he has one more question.
This is actually a follow-up to the staff on the question that was coming out to the numbers. If, and let's see, he's diverted there. And this is a question back to the staff, again, to the numbers. I don't see anything, or maybe I've missed it. Let's say I've got a 12,000-square-foot lot. Can I put two detached ADUs on the premise, as long as I'm still within the 35% coverage?
Through the chair, I would say, Mr. Strike, you're only allowed one ADU.
I'm not seeing anything that says you're only allowed one.
I, I believe the intent is to only allow one, one ADU.
Because the argument could be made, I've now got an acre lot, and I want to add six ADUs out there, and start renting them out during the summertime, and do a VRBO, and so forth.
I would say the principal use of the property would effectively change at that point. If I, if I can make one clarification, my last statement with regard to whether or not she can do detached, I have to point out the fact that, under the current ordinance, there are minimum lot size requirements for a detached ADU, regardless of whether you're in the R2D or the R4. It requires a minimum 10,000-square-foot lot, or for that lot to abut an alley. With this ordinance, it proposes to strike both of those requirements and allow for a detached ADU on any conforming lot. So I stand corrected, my apologies, but that need to be pointed out.
And so, to clarify, though, is there a gap in the way the ordinance is written that doesn't limit the number of detached ADUs?
I... Always causing problems.
Actually, this has come up, this came up in a conversation I've had here in about the last, this last summer. Folks were talking about doing exactly this, but they were talking about putting four or five of these small homes on a piece of property.
Is that so bad?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike.
Sure.
Mr. Shutey brought to my attention on page nine, subsection two, detached ADU. One ADU detached from a single-family dwelling is permitted on a lot. So it does, in fact, limit it to one detached ADU.
Where are you quoting again?
Page nine of the staff packet, subsection two, detached ADU. One ADU detached from a single-family dwelling is permitted on a lot, tract, or parcel. It would be specifically line 10 through 12.
Well, keep reading, because except for the R1 and R1A, but only if the lot or tract is greater than 10,000 or greater.
That's, that's proposed to be deleted.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Saylor, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening, my name is Art Clark. I'm with Real Estate Brokers of Alaska, and I'm the broker. I'm also on the Live, Work, Play Housing, Affordable Housing Committee. I am testifying today in support of this ordinance. I've been in real estate now for far too long, and we have a critical shortage of properties in this community, specifically in areas like the downtown area, which we need to have more property, more housing for people that are going to be living downtown, if we're going to have a vibrant downtown area. I recently had an opportunity to go to Portland, Oregon for an ADU conference, got a chance to look at a number of different properties in a lot, in quite a variety of different areas, some of them very, very similar to, like, South Edition or Old Turnigan by the Sea, and they seem to be very compatible. A lot of the people that are doing those, it's kind of a mixed bag. There were a lot that were doing them for Airbnb, some for just income properties, but an awful lot of people were also doing it for housing either seniors or family members. So again, I'm in support of the ordinance.
Mr. Clark, when you were on the tour, did, were there ADUs that struck you as being sort of too, too large? Like, you sort of knew, knew when the scale was wrong with the neighborhoods?
I have to say that that's correct, yes. Well, and in some cases, it wasn't necessarily that they were too large, but they just seemed too much like mansions to me. But that's my own personal preference. I think there's going to be an awful lot of room, and eventually, the system will have to shake that out as to what needs to be built in what area. And it's going to be kind of on a case-by-case basis, I would imagine.
Great. Mr. Spinelli has a question for you.
I guess, real quick to follow up on that question, have you seen single-family houses that are too large?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then my next question is, as your years of selling real estate, did you work much in residential field?
Oh, mostly in the residential field.
Did you show many, how many, do you see many illegal or bootlegged ADUs?
I don't know that I would say very many, but I've seen an awful lot of properties where it looked like something was removed to make it compatible with financing down the road, because if there is something that looks like an auxiliary dwelling unit in a single-family home, that's not going to be financeable, so there has to be a kitchen or something taken out of that property to make it compatible. So yes, I would say I have seen some.
And do buyers consider that appealing?
Yes.
That's all.
Related to the question regarding your, your impressions of the size of the ADUs you saw in, in Oregon, did you have any impressions with respect to the height of the ADUs that you saw there?
I don't think so, no. I didn't see anything that looked extraordinarily out of context for the neighborhoods around there. And I will say that there, it's a lot more compact there than it is here. Things are built an awful lot closer in most of those areas. There are great many houses on, on a great many lots.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Chair members of the committee, my name's Dan Gleason, G-L-E-A-S-O-N. I was a member of the Turnigan Community Council that came up with the comments, and I fully support the comments from the Turnigan Community Council. I also wanted to, for my individual comments, I want to say, I'm really concerned about the deletion of 10,000-foot requirement in R1 and R1A, and it leads to number 10 on page 11, which is line 37, and that's the utilities portion of it, to the extent allowed by law. On utilities turf, the ADU shall be connected to the water, sewer, gas, and electric utilities of the single-family dwelling unit. I'm concerned about the, the issues with utilities, and then really concerned about, however, lots with onsite water or septic systems may have a separate water and/or septic system for the ADU. Now, if you're going to have a lot that is less than 10,000 feet, and has a separate well and septic system, you're going to get into, in Alaska, I think that's going to lead to some problems from, from an engineering standpoint. So you're going to get into a quagmire with this, with this, with your utilities. That's my comments.
Thank you. I'm going to ask staff, the, I think the second half maybe is remedied through, through approval systems related to septic and kind of what happens there. I actually want to think about the first clause. We're not saying that these units need to be separately metered, we're talking about just, there's one tie-in to the pipe. I mean, is that what's going on there?
Through the chair, to the commission, yes. I mean, this utility section exists in current code. The intent is just to connect to utilities. To speak to Dan's point on, on well and septic properties that are located with well and septic, obviously, there are some challenges there in constructing an ADU on those, in that they would potentially have to meet separation distances and things of that sort. So through the permitting process, you may not be able to, to construct an accessory dwelling unit on a property that has onsite systems where separation distances between your well and septic couldn't be met. So, you know, that's, that's already addressed through our permitting process.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify, come on forward. At least two more.
Good evening, my name is Chris Herman, H-E-R-M-A-N. My wife and I live out by Kincaid Park, in an area that's zoned R1A, and we've got an acre and a half of property. When we moved up here in 2010, we looked all over town for a house that had some property, and we also wanted a large garage. And we finally settled on a place out by Kincaid, had plenty of property, but it didn't have a garage. And, but that, what that did mean to us was that we could finally build a garage that would suit and tailor our needs. To do it cost-effectively, we figured we would add a mother-in-law apartment to it. And until our mothers or parents were ready to move in with us, we figured we would rent it out, because we live close to Kincaid, and there's a lot of people to go up for ski events, et cetera. It all made sense to us. Every time we went to the muni, we were told, "No, we couldn't do that, and we couldn't do this, we couldn't do that." And after, I think, the third or fourth visit, we were finally told that the, there is one possible way to do it, and that would be to attach it to the house. So when we looked at those options, we bumped into a couple of issues. On the northeast side of the house, we would probably have to move our well, and on top of that, the septic system is on the complete opposite side of the house, which would be pretty spendy to tie into that. On the south side of the house, it would involve tearing down part of our deck that we just built, and it would also involve moving our septic system 20 feet. So really, the only cost-effective way to do this is to build a detached garage where we have ample space. It would be on the south side of our house. There's plenty of parking, we've got driveway access, we wouldn't have to move the well or septic, all the hookups are close, we have the support of our neighbors. At some point in time, one of our parents is probably going to have to move in with us, or close to us. They told us many times they don't want to live with us, but they would live, they would live close to us. And having an ADU at our place in a detached garage like this would make sense to us. So we're both trying to get this done, we're hoping you guys will move forward with this, and we are in full support of this.
Chris, how do you think your neighbors would react?
We've talked to both of them. We only have two other neighbors down our street, and they're, they're both in support.
Okay.
Yeah, no issues.
Great. Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, again tonight, my name is Tim Potter with Al Engineers. I'm actually speaking on my own behalf tonight, so I guess I only get three minutes, but I am co-chair of the AADC Live, Work, Play Housing Committee, and did participate in the subcommittee that worked on the ADU ordinance. So, no special treatment, though, but in the old days, they used to put carriages in a garage or carport, and staff or others would... used to put carriages in a garage or carport and staff or others would live above that and it was called a carriage house, a great thing. And I just want you to think about that, that it's been done for a long time. And, you know, some things about the ADU that you need to keep in mind is that all building codes still apply, all fire codes still apply, all plumbing, electrical, everything else still applies, all the health standards are still in place. So you're right, there's a 40,000 square foot minimum for a septic system and/or well. So all of that would have to comply. They would have to go get, in your case, you'd have to go to the health department and make sure that your septic system was set up to be accepting that many bedrooms or units. What currently happens in a lot of neighborhoods, and it certainly happens all up and down the street in Clay Porter's, in my neighborhood, is that we have numerous homes, not objecting to it, that are group homes and/or not group homes, but somebody owns a house and they rent all the rooms out to a bunch of people that all have a car, truck, snow machine, a bunch of crap, a trailer, whatever, and perfectly fine. In fact, our, our code says that you can have eight non-related people living in a house and it can be a single-family home, no problem. I've got one of those right across the street from me. I have a house that if I could, it's a house that's situated on the lot, dead center in the lot, so it didn't leave me one side that was bigger than the other. So I'm not a candidate for detached, but I am a candidate for an attached in the basement. But if it's only 700 square feet, I've got about another 300 square feet of basement that can't be part of that unit and it, you know, what do I do? So bumping up to 900 square feet helps quite a bit. Everything else is set up. I've got a two-car garage, three-space-wide driveway. In Clay Porter's case, he's got an old tennis court that isn't used anymore in his backyard looking out at Otis Lake, and he could certainly put a 900-square-foot unit out there. As many of the people talked about, there's different reasons for why people would want to do an ADU. My wife has health issues and I'll wrap up real quickly. We've done a small addition to the house so we could put in an elevator through all three levels because her health is such that she's going to need an elevator, does, does right now. We know that we want to stay in the house, great house, great views, but we want to be able to have the opportunity to have some caregiver assisting us because of her health concerns, because I'm just not going to be able to do it all. And it would be nice to be able to have them independently, but still be onsite, whether that's a college student or something else. We're by the university, we're by all the medical facilities, so it makes sense. So give some consideration of this. It is probably one of the best possible ways to add housing. Not all of it is affordable by any sense because it will be costly depending on each site, but that's my input. I'm fully in support of this ordinance and I think it creates a development that's way better than most and...
You should have asked for the five minutes. I wasn't wrapping. So if you'd just given the five minutes, you would have been fine. You would have gone over that one too, I bet, so...
Probably. I could go on.
Anyway, I appreciate your testimony.
The committee has done a lot, a lot of work. We did have people that went outside.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Susan Fison, that's F-I-S-O-N. I'm the chair of the accessory dwelling committee for the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation, Live, Work, Play Housing Area Focus. And I went along with Art to the tour and workshop on accessory dwellings in Portland and I was very impressed there. And the lot sizes of most of these places were five or six thousand square feet and the houses were in varying size, the beginning houses, but in virtually all cases, I thought the ADUs were really compatible with the existing space. We did see one that was enormous. It was on a very enormous lot. It had a huge garage underneath, much larger than the ADU, and then the ADU was on top. This, this was in a very big house and it was so large, they even did a putting green. But this was a $440,000 ADU and that included the garage. One of the things about ADUs is they are not inexpensive and I don't think there's a risk that we're, that neighborhoods are going to be overrun with ADUs. On a square footage basis, they tend to be quite expensive. But I would like to follow on what Tim had said about seniors. I want to give you a specific example of a senior who's doing ADU right now. She lives in this split-level house and she raised five children in this house, so there were seven people living in this house. It's 3,000 square feet. She's now 94 and she really can't navigate the stairs. And so her son, what they decided is her son and his wife, who have no children, their children are growing, wanted to live upstairs and they wanted to reconfigure their house, which is a single-family house near Sand Lake, so that she could live in the ground level. And I talked to, they weren't, not able to come today because they were on an airplane flying back from the Lower 48. But in trying to do this, the 700 square feet proved to be a really difficult thing and they certainly had a lot more space to work with. And they had a, on a whole lot of issues they had to deal with, with the, with the existing ordinance. The new ordinance would be much improved. But this is an example. We have a lot of housing in Anchorage and people have way more space than they, than they need. And so increasing this to 900 square feet, particularly for existing structures, as Tim indicated in his, would be very, very important. And I think the other thing you'll find is, I think the 900 square foot certainly detached will be quite rare, but on, on a, if you have a large lot, like this other gentleman talked about, I think it would be really feasible. Some of the things that they went into trying to do this accessory dwelling unit the way it was, is they were telling things like, there were two rooms actually down there and they had to make the windows...
Were you speaking on behalf of yourself or...
No, the group.
So you get two more minutes.
Okay. He was told he had to make windows so you couldn't do egress out of them. There were just crazy things, doing the door through a closet into the garage. I mean, some of the things, the guy said it was just absolutely bizarre. And this ADU that they're doing in this house is going to be $300,000. And they are in completion, but it's been a very difficult process. So the 900 square feet would have made it much, much easier. One of the things we have to think about in Anchorage is we're building very little rental housing. In 19, or 2016, we only added 102 multifamily units and of those, only 43 were market rate rentals. And even if we were able to double the number of ADUs to 40, it would make a huge increase in the potential for additional rental housing in our community in potentially desirable neighborhoods where people really want to live. And there's no government subsidy required to do this and it adds to the tax base and really allows families to be multi-generational in the same space. I think it's a great opportunity and I know that there's some neighborhood concerns, but I think that this is one of those ways that I think the, the business of traffic and property values in there all is overblown. From what I've seen in Portland with accessory dwelling units, these enhance property values in the neighborhood and certainly the particular property, I don't think they damaged the value of any of the properties in adjacent neighborhoods as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. Did you see, did you see ADUs that were two-bedroom ADUs when you were touring?
Very few.
Should we, should we...
No.
Should we say it's okay to have two-bedroom ADUs?
It doesn't, I, I think it's however they want to configure the space. One of the things, I did some pictures of those and one of the things I found is the ones that had two bedrooms, the second bedroom tended to be really tiny. And we're talking tiny, if there were two bedrooms, they were really tiny bedrooms. So I really don't think that that's, that's an issue. And, and I did some statistics on this, but most ADUs are occupied by one person, two at most. I think it's very, very rare to find more than two people living in an ADU and most of them are one. And we found a tremendous number of ADUs are occupied by family members. But this still increases the supply of housing. I know when I moved to Anchorage in 1982, my parents had, had a, had a little apartment downstairs where they built the house upstairs. They did it in the basement. And I lived in that ADU for five years. So it was wonderful, but it was at my parents' house. So I think it's, I think it's something, the time has come and young people also are looking at smaller spaces. We have a lot of houses. It's not unusual to have whole neighborhoods where the houses are 3,000 square feet. And neighborhoods like Turnigan and some of these older neighborhoods, most of the lots are about 10,000 square feet. So our lots here are much larger than what they were dealing with in Portland. And there's a very good article in the New York Times this week about single-family housing and the fact that, that single-family housing needs to be looked at as a way to help increase the density around the country. It's really one of the solutions, single-family neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission for staying late to hear about this issue tonight. My name is Moira Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R. I spelled the first one too, it's M-O-I-R-A. I am the director of the Live, Work, Play Initiative at the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation. I'm also here simply as myself. I was born and raised here. I'm actually a third-generation resident of the South Edition neighborhood. My grandparents moved to South Edition in 1946 and built their house there. And I'm working on the fourth generation on the way. I wanted to talk about this issue from a macro perspective. We've talked a lot about the shortage of housing, particularly the missing middle here in Anchorage, and that's kind of middle-income housing that would be appropriate for young professionals, also appropriate for seniors. In a really macro perspective, Anchorage is competing globally for talent. We are constantly trying to compete with other cities in this country and around the world to attract talented young professionals. Many other cities have adopted similar ordinances to the one that you're considering tonight that would allow for more development of ADUs and the effect in those cities has been substantial. Young professionals have increased rental options that are both affordable and are within existing suburban areas, which is where many young professionals want to live. Both young people and seniors have an opportunity to live near family. That can be a critical health issue for many people, young and old. And the one thing that hasn't been considered tonight is how this would affect people with disabilities. Many people who have a disability that they're living with want to live near family, but want to live in a way where they're not being completely assisted all the time because they have some sense of independence. So having an ADU onsite where they can be near a family member allows for a level of independence that you can't have if you're simply living in somebody else's home. Moreover, this ordinance would make homeownership more accessible for those in middle incomes by providing an additional source of income that could help offset those homeownership costs. Most cities have this. This hasn't been talked about enough, but we are really behind in terms of what we offer in terms of housing options for people all along the spectrum. But we're really missing this gap of affordable housing for people who are potentially just out of college or people who are retiring and wanting to age in place. I know personally, most people I went to college with, the first place they lived in cities across the country was in a mother-in-law apartment somewhere. ADUs are a necessary tool in our toolkit to provide the housing that Anchorage needs and fill in this missing middle. For too long, we've ignored the needs of both our younger and our older populations in favor of mid-range families and it's been to our detriment because when seniors don't feel they can safely age in place, they leave. That's problematic for our economy. They leave with their talents, they leave with their resources. And brain drain has been a problem in our city for decades. It costs us jobs and it costs us vibrancy. So please, as you're considering this ordinance, I urge you to ask, are we doing everything that we can to be an inclusive community? Are we trying to be inclusive of young professionals? Are we trying to be inclusive of seniors? Are we trying to be inclusive of those with disabilities? Or are we treating the status quo as the only option to be preserved at all costs? Just like companies, cities have to innovate or die, Anchorage cannot be stagnant and this is one way in which we need to innovate. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else wishing to testify?
My name's Ron Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I wanted to say a couple of different things. There's been a lot of public process in this because the entire planning, zoning, 40-40, 20-20 plan, all of it had to do with this and that's what leads to this. I permit, I used to work at the city for 20-plus years. I now help people get permits. I get these kind of calls all the time. Can we do this? Can we do that? We had to take our kitchen out. Can we put it back in now? 90% of the people that are out there that have these type of structures have been told at some time or another that they can't put these in. So what do they do? I think somebody mentioned a little bit ago, they take the kitchen out or they take the bathroom out or they, because you have to have the three criteria to make this work. And the frustrating thing is, we know they're there, they're going in, and these, these rules only make a little bit more flexibility. They've been allowed, it's great. 70, 700 square foot, 900 square foot aren't maximums. Those are percentages of the house. So it doesn't automatically get 900. You get the percentage based upon the size of the residence, so you don't have to worry about the, the out-of-proportionism with regard to the house. So it's a very good positive scenario. The one area that, and I brought it up in our meetings with the municipality, and I work with the home builders and we work with planning on all of these ordinances and work together trying to create a process that puts a product that gets out there that's used that the community wants. In this case, there was one question that, when we talked about, that I think needs to be added, and that is the ability to do the distance from the face of the front yard to the street for an accessory dwelling unit. In a lot of these lots, our lots are narrow and long. You can't get a driveway around the back, so it still limits certain places where if you could put a garage out front because a person has a garage and they want to put an ADU up on top, unless it's 10 feet behind the face of the front structure of the house, you can't do it. But you could build a garage with a room without the kitchen and do it all day long, meeting the code and the accessory part of it. I think that that piece could be added to make a little bit more flexibility and allow the buildings that get built in a large garage. A lot of people want to do the garage. The garage by itself doesn't quite pay the square, pay per square footage, but with a mother-in-law that you get the bonus room up on top, really helps out a lot on the financial criteria. Everything's gone up in price and I think this is one of the, the methods that we can use to clean that up. The, and so I would encourage, I would hope that you understand what I'm saying, that the height of the garage stays there, the size of the garage, lot coverage, all those things are there, but the distance from the face is really a difficult one on, on either long, narrow lots because you can never meet far enough back, or on a lot that has the house in the back and you want to put a garage out front and do the accessory.
Thanks for your testimony. I think you're referring, there's a section under the additional requirements for detached ADUs and it, number one talks about either a front setback of at least 40 feet from the street frontage or at least 10 feet behind the street-facing facade of the principal dwelling unit. That's the one you're talking about?
Correct. It went from 60 down to 40, so it's, it's heading in the direction, but 40 feet is not going, I mean, that's very difficult to meet 40 foot. You already have the 20-foot setback. The garage could go at 20 foot. Why can't you just meet the garage requirement with a room above and call it an ADU? You can, you still have all the other requirements to make it look like the, you know, the principal, make it look like the things that you can do. But it's really frustrating when you deal with a client that has just taken the kitchen out or you have a lot that really can't get it 10 feet behind the face of the structure. It looks odd or, or, you know, the different, different makeups. I think you can see, you're getting exactly my point.
Great. Thanks for your testimony.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Who else wants to testify on this? Just a quick show of hands so we know. Are we, are we, we're getting, there's still a few fresh faces out there. Last call on, on public testimony. Last chance. Okay. Going once, going twice. Public hearing is closed. Yeah, absolutely. Questions for staff? Go ahead.
This is a, poses a question, but a kind of a statement. And I've been tracking the ADUs detached, not the attached, the garage over. And this is very common in the Lower 48. We're seeing this all over the country. And in tracking some of these in other parts of the country is interesting now to track the problems or the issues of neighborhoods. the problems or the issues the neighborhoods begin to face with these. And some of the complaints that I've heard have been around the materials and the aesthetics that they don't match, they don't blend in with the current structure that was built. And invariably, you're going to get the, in fact, there's a whole industry built around, and I'm a little surprised, well, cost will come down dramatically up here in Alaska for these ADUs, I believe. They did in the Lower 48. They went prefab. They were built out of the factory, and you can order them overseas now out of a catalog with Conex boxes. So what are we going to do when we first see the first three, two-story with three Conex boxes being set up in the back of the yard? And I say that loosely, but these Conex boxes, you would give your right arm to actually have one of these. They're sliding glass doors, and they're open up with decks and so forth. I mean, they're actually quite nice. There's whole industries built up now building these things, built to order out of a catalog. But at the end of the day, you've got an aesthetics issue. You've got a materials consistency. And I know you're not looking at subdivision covenants, but many subdivisions have covenants that still require to be followed, but that's up to the subdivision to enforce because you're not enforcing the subdivision covenants. So, you know, that's a problem that we've seen, that I've seen in talking to folks down south on this. And now all of a sudden, you're seeing subdivisions rise up that were dormant in the past, that now are coming back in and saying, we have to reactivate our 35, 40-year-old subdivision covenant in order to start enforcing some of the materials and aesthetics that are being built on these ADUs, for these ADUs. Mr. Potter mentioned, he's in a subdivision that has a subdivision covenant but hasn't been enforceable for probably 35 years. Same issue. But these are the situations and the problems that are going to come about from this that are good problems to solve, and I think we need to figure out how we solve those to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Anybody else have questions for staff? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. Regarding Mr. Thompson's testimony and the additional requirements for detached ADUs, and the ADU shall be set back on all street frontages, either have a front setback of at least 40 feet or be at least 10 feet behind the street-facing facade of the principal dwelling unit. If it was built above a garage, would that be, I guess, how would the code kind of...
Mr. Spinelli. Mr. Thompson has a point. Because when you have a detached garage, the detached garage is subject to the underlying zoning district regulations for setbacks. However, because you add an accessory dwelling unit, you are now subject to the requirements, the use-specific requirements that are called out in the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So that changes the use from just a detached garage to a detached garage with an accessory dwelling unit. So in other words, you're now subject to either the current language, a 60-foot setback, or the proposed language, a 40-foot setback, or that you set back your garage and accessory dwelling unit 10 feet from the street-facing front facade of the house. So he does have a point. We didn't want to, when we drafted this ordinance, we didn't want to differ greatly from the existing language. Portland, I believe, has a 40-foot setback for detached ADUs, which is why we proposed the language, the modification from 60 feet to 40 feet. However, I will admit, Mr. Thompson does have a point.
I guess just one more follow-up in case I missed it. So if the garage being detached but isn't allowed use, would the ADU still be considered detached even though it's above an allowed use? I guess that's...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Spinelli, yes.
There's a lot of comments in here. There's a separate, you know, Ms. Gleason referred to it, document from Long Range Planning, and they talk about, and I think we had an additional testimony talking about the options to moderate the increases in size. I don't believe any of those options have been introduced into this ordinance, and I'm wondering whether for staff or for Commission to just sort of contemplate it. I think we heard a lot of testimony supporting ADUs, but we also know that if these things are done poorly and they stretch to the edges of lots and, you know, one of the, you know, sort of dealing with mass and bulk and height, you know, you either kind of squeeze it in a little bit and make it higher, or if it's a little bit less of a structure, it can spread out a little bit. But I think aside from the limitation, the 75% limitation and a 900 square foot, you're still going to be able to put a fairly large-sized apartment on top of a three-car garage, which is allowable, provided that you have at least, you know, what, a 1,200-square-foot house in the front of the lot. That's a big structure, right?
I think it's important to point out also that you still have to adhere to the max lot coverage. And in some of these situations, you may exceed max lot coverage, which would not allow you to build the detached ADU to the maximum size. So I think it's important to point that out. You're still subject to the setbacks, so you can't build right on the property line. You're subject to the max lot coverage, like I said. So that needs to be considered as well. And if I could, Mr. Chair, address your question about Long Range Planning's comments. I think the planning staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as proposed. I think what Long Range Planning's intent was is recognizing that there were certain issues out there revolving around height, revolving around the size, revolving around detaching ADUs, that they were providing options should the Commission be looking for options or other options to consider. So.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Spring.
Yeah, the article that Sue Faison mentioned in New York Times actually was very interesting, and it discussed that link, this dispute, I think it's a dispute in Berkeley, California, where ADU was allowed by, right, in the ordinance. But they repeatedly sued the city trying to stop it. And the one guy that was the primary initiator of the lawsuits had a garden in the back, right? And his big concern was the fact that this was going to shadow his garden and that, oh, he's grown food for everybody around him and everything, and it would basically destroy his garden. That's kind of why I like Tom's idea about the setback if it's a certain height, just to give a little space there. Is that, have you heard any concerns about that? About the fact that the shadowing effect might be detrimental to, like, people's summer
No, the memo we provided shows the comparative shadowing impacts between a city of Portland's latitude and Anchorage. So you'll have a more, a larger shadow impact, which is the reason why we suggested allowing the ADU to be two stories, but take it down a few feet in height, down closer towards the leading ADU cities require. And to take a really careful look at the setback from the side lot line of a two-story ADU and, because your shadow impacts around the equinox, where the middle of the year, towards the end of the growing season or the beginning of the growing season, those will be much more pronounced at our climate. And that's why we looked at what the other leading ADU cities did as far as setbacks and height, and talked to our own building safety department and found that, you know, if you're going to build an ADU, you could fit it in a shorter building than 25 feet. You can go down towards what the leading ADU cities have for their height limits, and it's all there in the table.
Just to follow up, you have two options regarding the shadowing. In fact, the one option is the 15 feet, is taller than 15 feet adhere to a 10-foot side setback, and the other one is involving a daylight plane. And I think your diagram was good. Which one provides the better protection to shadowing a neighbor's yard?
The diagram is on page 30 of your packet. The diagram shows three scenarios. And first of all, they assume a 22-foot tall, excuse me, yes, a 22-foot-tall two-story ADU, which is three feet shorter than what the draft ordinance proposes, 22 feet being the option suggested by Long Range Planning. 22 feet meaning to the midpoint of the roof. The top scenario on page 30 shows 22-foot-tall two-story ADU shadowing a neighbor to the north at the five-foot setback. Then you have the two options. The first option, 5A, is shown in the middle diagram, the middle picture. It shows an impact a little bit less than the five foot. The daylight plane is the most effective for that day and time and geometry. So the geometry being you have a lot to the south and a lot to the north. You know, the shadow, this is a snapshot in time. It's August 21, again, towards the end, then the growing season. So I guess for that time, that date, that daylight plane option would be, have the least impacts. The 10-foot setback is simpler and is more lenient and flexible for the builder, the ADU. So it depends on priorities. The previous diagram does show, though, on page 29, your comparative impacts in these other, between what Anchorage deals with compared to these other cities.
You good?
He's good.
Okay. Any final questions for staff? Okay, what's the rule of the body? Mr. Spinelli.
I make a motion that we approve with STACK recommendations A1 through 4.
Thank you. That's seconded by Mr. Spring. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I think a lot of work has gone into the ordinance. I think it's supported by the goals of the 2040 Plan. I think majority of the public testimony was in favor of it. I think there's some concerns that we could possibly work out with maybe some amendments, but I'm willing to support the ordinance as written.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Mr. Spring.
I'd like to start an amendment process.
Yeah, go ahead. You can offer an amendment.
Offer amendment. And this pertains to the traffic comment, that streets should be of adequate design to meet, let's see, hang on a second. I gotta look up the page number.
Point of order.
Streets...
Point of order. Mr. Spring, was your amendment seconded?
I haven't...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Spinelli, was your, was your original motion seconded?
It's seconded by Mr. Spring.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. My apologies.
Yeah, my amendment is, streets shall be of adequate design to support on-street parking and improvements to site that meet requirements specified in 2107090F19. Sorry, I didn't put that down there.
Is there a second? Hearing none, that amendment fails for lack of a second. Yeah, while he's doing that, I got one other, back to my multifamily question, my multifamily lot question. Again, you can build a multifamily structure, and there's no requirement that there be an owner occupant of the multifamily structure. I understand the provision kind of as it's related to single-family neighborhoods that are primarily, although I'd be really interested to know how many owner-occupied units we really have in all of these neighborhoods. There's a heck of a lot of rentals out there. But why, why does the housing type in a multifamily structure dictate an ownership recommendation that you otherwise don't have in that multifamily zoning district? In other words, if that's a good way to deal with density, even if it's all rentals, why wouldn't you do that versus somehow saying, well, because you're actually going to build it differently, now there's got to be an owner that lives on-site?
Well, I mean, I think the, Mr. Robinson, I think the intent is if you're going to call it an ADU rather than just another dwelling unit, that it has to be, either the principal dwelling unit or the ADU has to be owner-occupied. So if you don't want to do an accessory dwelling or you don't want it to be owner-occupied, then you could build in conformance with whatever the underlying zoning district allows for dwelling units. I'm not sure where I, I'm not sure I understand exactly where you're coming from on the multifamily side. I don't, I don't get the correlation. I mean, I just, I think either you build in conformance with whatever the underlying zoning district allows, or you choose to do an ADU. But if you choose to do an ADU, then you're subject to the regulations that ADU.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't understand the choice. I mean, I might say I'd rather have, because of the way we built these originally as single-family neighborhoods in the first place, and they got converted to multifamily districts in the pipeline years, that there's still something with an ADU that lends itself to sort of more the character of the building, but yet you've sort of predicated a different owner. I mean, I get it as a choice. I just, I don't, I don't, anyway, you see where I'm, I don't agree with it, but I can't make any motions here. All right, go ahead. You got another one? No, just go ahead, Mr., are you into an amendment? No? Okay. Mr. Spring. This goes getting late. Run.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm going to go through the amendments that Tom Davis has specified on 28, just see if there's any support for it, I guess. The...
Speak in your mic. Mic, 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 mic.
Sorry. 4A, page 28, amendment would be, in Class A districts, the gross floor area of the ADU, not including any related garage, shall be no greater than 800 square feet or 50% of the total gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit, excluding the ADU and garages, whichever is less.
Okay, is there a second to that, to that motion for purpose of debate if nothing Second by Mr. Strike. Go ahead, speak to your motion.
Well, I think this is kind of a compromise, and there is a distinction, I think, between attached and detached, however. My main concern is the detached size. If it's, I might want to amend it, but if it's, I think, allowing a larger square footage for attached would be less intrusive in the neighborhood and less impactful than it would be for a detached. But my motion states... And I think the idea that the garages, excluding garages in ADU, is an important exception.
Anyone else wishing to speak to that? Mr. Looney.
Actually, I was back in the main motion, and I was just gonna voice my support for the main motion.
Okay.
Generally, of course, I reckon, I.
Can you, can you hold that? Because we're, right now, we're gonna deal with this amendment to the main motion. I'll come back to you, Brian. Mr. Spinelli.
Yeah, can, through the chair, can staff please clarify what all Class A districts, what's all included in Class A districts?
Through the chair, so the code is separated between Class A and Class B zoning districts. Our Class A districts are urban districts, so R1, R1A, R2, R3, R4. Our Class B zoning districts are rural districts, R6, R7, R8, R9, R10. So that's why the code is broken up in such a way to distinguish between urban and rural effectively.
I'd just speak to the amendment. I won't be supporting the amendment. That would, one of the things that we saw when we were talking about creating this code was that the size of the units was not, it just didn't make much sense. If somebody only had a thousand-square-foot house, why, why should they be limited to, so, a 500-square-foot, if it was 50% ADU unit? You know, why are they being penalized for already having a small house on their property when the guy next door can go ahead and build a 6,000-square-foot house, you know, with up to eight unrelated people and still be next door to it? So I think this kind of takes away from the, what the ordinance is going for here.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Please vote on the amendment to the main motion. Mr. Spring.
Yes, next motion on page 28. I'm gonna go with the option A, detached accessory units taller than 15 feet shall adhere to a 10-foot side setback, butting a neighboring, and I want to limit it to R1, R1A zoning districts.
Okay, so as written in option A, but the distinction that it would only apply to R1 and R1A, is there a second to that proposed amendment? Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Go ahead, speak to your motion.
Yeah, I think, I do have some real concerns about the shadowing effect, and I think detached units are different from the attached, and that they should be recognized as such. The R1 and R1A is generally a pretty low-density area, and there's people who buy their, for, primarily for a lot of reasons, for just having a yard and being able to grow things, and especially in my neighborhood. And to kind of, having an adjacent unit five feet from your yard is going to be really intrusive, I think, especially with respect to the shadowing effect.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Anyone else wishing to speak to that motion? Can I just ask, Mr. Spinelli, what's the width of a typical two-car garage?
Standard two-car garage would be 20 feet wide, the minimum width. I mean, actually, maybe 22 feet. Oh, 20 feet. Nine by 20 is a standard parking spot.
And a three-car garage? 32 feet. So you probably couldn't get that, with that amendment, you probably couldn't get a three-car garage with a structure above it, with that, with that, if you assume a 50-foot wide lot with two 10-foot side setbacks. Plus a way to get upstairs somehow, right? Just want to understand implications, good or bad. I just want to understand it.
We're gonna meet the lot coverage requirement.
Okay. Is there any, any other question or comments on the proposed amendment to the, to the main motion?
I guess, I'd like to comment on it. I, I hear the concerns of Charnigan Community Council, and I understand the concerns of the R1A people, and so I'm, you know, willing to listen for amendments that would protect the R1A. But at the same time, this one, the 10-foot side yard setback might not be so bad, but the 15-foot height seems pretty limiting. And so I'm pretty, I'm kind of on the fence on whether or not I'd support it.
So the, so the issue, as I read it, is that it can exceed, if, if you build a single-story one, you can be within that, you know, five-foot setback, but if you go over 15 feet, then you have to abide by the two 10-foot setbacks. That's how I read that.
Yeah.
So it's not limited in 15 feet?
That makes sense, because you could put a shed up that's 15 feet, so, and within five feet of the setback. So that makes sense to limit it to 15 feet or make that the threshold criteria.
I guess I just want to bring up another, one of my concerns is another one of the reasons that this ordinance is in front of us is because if you, when you start putting more restrictions on what somebody could already build on a lot, they'll tend to incentivize bootleg-style construction or, you know, it kind of, I mean, a case in point is the existing ADUs that were built without a code to allow for them. So, I mean, that's, that's one of my concerns, is if you put too much restriction on it, they might not call it an ADU, but it still might be that tall, and it still might cast the same shadow.
Other than this being a policy decision, Mr. Whitfield, any comments on that amendment?
You know, I, this, this issue of shading and setback is a good issue to bring up. And one thing that I probably should also point out is that if you were to, if you've got a single-family home on a 6,000-square-foot lot in the R1 district, you'd be permitted to do an addition on your home that complies with a five-foot side yard setback, that would effectively cast the same shadow as a detached ADU would. So I think that that needs to be pointed out as well. I understand the concerns of shadowing and all that, but as code is currently written, you could effectively do an attached ADU that casts the same shadow that that detached ADU would, so.
Anybody else? Doing a little math in my head here. Anybody else? Okay, please vote on that proposed amendment. That amendment passes. We're back to the main motion. Mr. Looney wanted to speak to the main motion. Mr. Spring, are you still gonna offer an amendment?
Yeah, I feel like I should just go through the rest of them, just real quick. Not sure how much support there is. Page 28, number 6, the maximum height of a detached ADU shall be 22 feet in the, I'm gonna restrict it to the R1 and R1A district, and 25 feet in other districts.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Speak to your motion, please.
Yeah, again, 22 feet seems like a reasonable compromise. I think the existing ordinance seems to have a little bit more leeway in terms of height than what we saw in some of the other ordinances around the country that were listed by Tom Davis, Portland, Seattle, et cetera. And the 10 feet, it relates to the 10-feet setback and the shadow effect to, you only have to have a 10-foot setback if it's above 15 feet, if you go. So it makes sense to also kind of limit the height so that the shadow effect is also reduced, not only by the setback, but by the height.
Can I ask a question of perhaps Mr. Spinelli? First of all, to staff, is that, that height, maximum height, is the midpoint of the height, or is that, is that the roof of the height?
Through the chair, to the commission, it would be a midpoint. It'd be the way that we would, we would measure height, so.
So given that midpoint, what's, you know, Mr. Spinelli, you want to do a garage with a unit above, do you have issues getting that into that, into that space?
Well, I, basically, with a, with a nine-foot lid, I mean, you would end up with a, with a, a garage and then a second floor above it, you end up with an 18-foot plate height, and then that would allow you basically an eight-foot to the peak from that point. So depending on the width of the structure, it might be challenging, but you could come up with some more complicated roof designs or lower-pitched roofs to stay below that One of my concerns with the amendments that we're making is that, you know, we're kind of operating out of, you know, fear for all our backyards, and we might be penalizing a lot of structures that, you know, might not be considered offensive to any of their neighbors, so I just want to kind of bring that up.
Thanks for that feedback. I'm gonna go to Tom Davis and then Mr. Strike.
Yes, just regarding that information, the page 26 provides a small diagram of the, of a 24-foot-wide structure with a 6 to 12 roof pitch, showing how the, the structure would meet the standard. And we ran this through building safety or to ensure accuracy. Thank you.
You know, I'd just simply say, you know, the issue, am I correct in assuming that if it's a, if it's a wider-than-a-24-foot structure, then you'd have issues getting that height with the same pitch, right? If you wanted to actually create an entrance to the unit somewhere on the ground floor beyond the 24-foot width of the garage?
Yeah, you would have to lower the pitch to make it work.
Yeah. Mr. Strike.
Thank you, and through the chair, I'm not gonna be supporting that motion and the, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit here what Mr. Spinelli was indicating. And the one thing I think that he's missing, too, is that a lot of these garages, and I don't want to term, use the term shops, but a lot of these are actually going higher than the nine feet, and many of them are going to 13-foot ceilings. Folks do want to put motor homes in, for example, and build that other level above, and the 25-foot will just barely, will make it work, but, and so that's the option that we're taking away from folks, especially on larger lots.
Anybody else? That fails. We're back to the main motion. Mr. Looney, you had a comment related to the main motion.
Boy, it's been a while. Okay, so, so after listening to the testimony, I wanted to just voice my support for the main motion. I understand the concerns, or acknowledge the concerns that we've, we've heard about. There's safeguards that the proposed amendment are, will have in place between setbacks and max lot coverage, which is already there, parking requirements, max height, they're all there. But I think that the balance, or the, what this will offer to the community, which we also heard testimony about, outweighs those concerns in this case. So I think that the enhanced property values, affordable housing, which we're just short of, and this opportunity to have these generational families nearby is, is worth it, I think. So I know it could be a time to just kind of, with the ordinance, it may take some time to refine it over time, but I think we need to get something in place to move this direction. So I'll be supporting this, this ordinance.
Well said, Mr. Looney. Anybody else wishing to speak to Mr. Spinelli's main motion? Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion. I'm not against the ADUs by any means, and I think, as staff pointed out, there's gonna be a major shortage of housing units if the projections come in right, and there's not enough land, so we've got to do something, and this is probably the biggest source of available land and opportunities for new housing development that we have.
Thank you. Please vote on the main motion. I don't think that was it, was it?
What?
That was the previous one. I have a feeling there's more than one. Oh, it did come up there. Didn't come up on our machines. So assuming that case was accurate, that showed seven affirmative and zero nays. Can I at least, since that was a little bit weird, can everybody indicate that they, was there anybody here that voted no? Okay, so hearing none. The recommendation to approve in accessory, modification of the accessory dwelling ordinance moves on to the assembly for an additional public hearing and deliberation there before it can take effect. So thank you for sticking with us here this evening, everybody. Mr. Strike. Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. How?
Yes, I'd like to hand out, in your hand, before you leave this evening, we have a work program. I just want to make sure. It's also been sent to you via email, but you can take a look at it, study it, and we can come back and talk at another time.
So is that, is that for us to bring up at next meeting, or just if we have questions, or how would you like to?
Either way, it's good with me. I think just having a healthy discussion is important.
Okay, so maybe we can make sure that we discuss the work program or bring it up if there's any questions. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Looney. This meeting's adjourned.